Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluffing these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his buffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure Ace High, like Ace High has some showdown value. He had Ace five and when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that, he actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands did you have as you're folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with worse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls back at it, bro.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamberer for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streams. And we, we were aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best, you didn't say anything. You won. Straight up, you won. I, I, I just, yeah, I just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
Button cut off, high deck low jack, under the gun one.
Come on now, okay. I, um, so let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quit.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, let's play it.
I'm going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes. I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three points score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold.
But you heard what he said. I'm off the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold, it says right here.
If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life.
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queen? Who in the- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, alright guys, this is it.
What's up? You wanna give a gist? He was saying Yarco Kowas playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very agitated in this, uh, ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise the twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred and my man's given options twelve and fourteen hundred. So it's already getting, uh, kind of spicy.
That's so nasty to be on the site with these other crushers in a well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting. I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too. You know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable. Quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well. You know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
You didn't do that bad, forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The fact-
I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright guys, we're checking right now. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise and there's an anti-in play, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward, you want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you're going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'm gonna go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and-
I would fold in game though, for the record, in case I still were winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
Let's do it. Damn it.
Mm-hmm. Where do you go get my chat?
Get my chat.
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do, uh, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this. We'll do this, we'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man. And then, you know, we'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So it's tied.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even Steven.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. We are live, we are live. How you doing, man?
What's up, buddy? How you doing?
Too well. Saturday morning, just got out of bed, ready to get this learn on.
Let's do it, man. I'm excited to be back doing it again. Um, see, they got some new quizzes. We were kind of talking beforehand about, you know, um, some cool options, uh, some quizzes we'll tackle. So, yeah, I'm excited, man.
I'll give you a chance to look, but like six-twenty is looking pretty sexy to me.
Let's see what we got. I'm gonna pull it up. What's up, everybody out there? Appreciate you guys being here. Let's see what we got in the pipeline. Get this going. So six-twenty. Six-twenty for, oh, yours is- The twenty-two dollar nine K. Yeah, is this, this is the hand you post. I've, I've kind of seen it on, uh, Twitter. Yeah, this is a crazy spot. We may have even looked at this spot together.
I think we did.
In our group once. Yeah, yeah.
Not gonna do today, it's the teaser. I was just dying to-
It's the teaser. Yeah, just another little reason for you guys to, you know, create that free account, sign up. And you can do, you know, Toe's quizzes there and, you know, uh, we got a couple other quizzes. Our quizzes are in here as well.
Yeah, you know, like quiz five eighty-eight?
Yeah, five eighty-eight should be a good one. Um, so yeah, let's do it.
Cool. Hey, what's up, Cat? What's up, Okie Rain? What's up, Twirl Spam? Maschinen Joe, Beats, Dude Reno, Wizco? Thank you for those bits, all in my chat. People getting in here bright and early, ready to go. Uh, we are doing the pokercoaching.com, no delay, study stream, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in Crazy Six's chat. We are partners in crime and, uh, doing this together, going over these quizzes. Uh, like Sixes was saying, you get twenty free quizzes, I believe, when you sign up for the free option. And then also there's some homeworks in there for you and I believe they swap out every so often. Um, and then if you sign up for the premium version, there's over six hundred quizzes, um, and homeworks up to yin yang and all these things. So go check it out. Uh, link's in my chat already. I'm sure it's in Six's chat because he's responsible like that. And, uh, yeah, ready to rock.
We are ready. Um, how's it going, Journey? Good morning, good to see you. I'm having a little coffee with my daughter's mug. It's a little panda's, panda mug. Or my wife's mug she got for my daughter, but- So which one you trying to tackle, buddy?
I don't know. I was trying to come over your stream, I wanna see this mug.
Oh, yeah, check it out. Little panda, it's got little pink ears, smiling. Um, alright, let's take a look here.
Um, there are some fun ones, but there's a main event hand in here we were talking about.
Dude, and it's Sixes? Oh, bro, we gotta do it.
And it's Sixes, I didn't even realize that part.
Yeah, it's the main event and he's got pocket Sixes, so he's dealt the nuts. Let's see how Jonathan Little plays the nuts.
Cool. Uh, one thing really quickly, guys, for those of you guys just showing up, get involved. Um, get out there, let us know what you would do. You can see the answers down below on my screen right now. We'll listen to the video, but get involved. Um, let us know, don't be worried about being wrong or even if there's some controversy, we'll talk it out and figure it out. It's all about getting better together.
Absolutely, man. I mean, yeah, be sure, you can give your input, you know, it doesn't hurt. Um, and we all can learn something from it. So I'll learn something every time I do this. And as you can look at the scores, I actually have zero perfect scores, apparently. Got some really close ones. I got some four, but I don't think I have any perfect out of all these.
Don't remember if I have one or not, but if I have one-
You can look and see.
Yeah, like, yeah, so like, yeah, so, and we got so close last week. We got like ten, 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 ten.
Oh, man, we got a ten, 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 eight. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we got banged in the river.
It was like a four. God damn it.
It's, yeah, it's a Assassinato one as well, so, uh-
That's even more of a badge of honor.
I know, right? We almost, yeah. Nailed his one. Alright, what number was that? I lost the number.
Uh, number six something, six oh seven.
Six oh seven. Alright, cool. What's up, guys? Alright, so six oh seven, main event hand. Let's start it off and plan Sixes in the main at four-eight with a hundred bigs. I like it.
Here we have pocket Sixes in the World Series of Poker Main Event facing an under the gun limp. And I have a bit of information about this guy. This player typically is on the weaker, more splashy side. And, um, you know, that is relevant because some people only limp with the nuts looking to trap you, but I don't think that's this opponent. So should we fold? Call? Raise to twenty-four hundred or raise to thirty-eight hundred?
What do you guys think? Get them out there, fold, call, pop in a three X or pop in a-
What do you guys think? Um, we have the nuts, EP-
We have the nuts.
We have, we have the nuts here. And it's black Sixes as well, uh, twenty-four hundred thirty-eight. What are you guys thinking in chat here? Yo, what's up, Kaba?
I literally, first four answers are all, I have one of each. Fold, call, twenty-four hundred, thirty, they even went in order, thirty-eight hundred. Catch this calls, twenty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred, I'm getting more of twenty-four hundreds here.
Oh, one thing to clarify as well, just to kind of, um, throw something in there. Drenning, who actually signed up for a free account, said you get twenty-five free quizzes, not twenty. So you get twenty-five free quizzes, which is pretty sick, dude.
We've been streaming for fifteen minutes, you're already winning. Look at that, five bonus-
Yeah, five bonus quizzes out there for you guys if you just create a free account. So, um, in my chat so far, Famous Vibes, good morning, buddy, good to see you. He's gonna call. Kaba says, I'm gonna call here with small pocket pairs and cash games. So call seems good, call. Um, hmm. Yeah, personally, I'm probably just going to make it twenty-four thirty-eight.
Yeah, me too. Um, I tend to ISO with one limper, um, because I wanna get heads up with this guy. His Sixes are easier to play that way. If there was a, if there was another limper in here, I could see over limping behind and just go and smooth set mine.
Cause it feels like you'd be playing kind of a bloated raised pot and you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have to make it really big with the hand. It doesn't have a lot of playability. But in this case, um, getting a heads up versus a guy who's probably gonna never limp raise and he's only gonna do that with the top of his range. And we can win in position on a lot of different textures. Um, and if we limp here, you know, splashy player could squeeze, this guy could jam a little bit more often. Um, so yeah, I'd probably prefer to just raise here and get a heads up with the nuts for sure.
You know, what's funny is, um, I was studying cash games with JustGTO.
Yes.
And he was talking about when we're a hundred, two hundred blinds deep, like-
I remember that.
When we ISO these lippers, that looks weak. So the people behind you tend to three bet the ISO. So it's kind of those weird things, like now, now I'm conflicted as I'm looking at this, I'm like, well shit. Do I ISO this and risk getting the easy three bet when my ISO is obvious and that's could be weaker? Or do we limp and get squeezed and like, we're like, I like damned if we do it, damned if we don't.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, we can-
I still think people are less likely to three bet than ISO. I think when, or you know what I mean, squeeze rather.
Right, and if we raise here, I mean, we're just committed to getting in there with the fourteen bigs. Um, I would say, you know, with the dead money out there, uh, when he puts twenty-four, forty-eight plus what's already out there to twenty-eight. Um, so we're just gonna have to call this with a pair. Um, and that, that's okay when we ISO. So, yeah, I, I really don't mind getting a heads up and trying to force these players at the pot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go twenty-four, thirty-eight.
Yeah.
That's what, uh, that's three X?
Yeah, I mean, three X would be on the small size, uh, side.
I really would like to go somewhere between the two.
Thirty-eight. Yeah, I mean, thirty-eight, yeah, I would honestly probably like to go, you know, maybe four X. But if we're going, this is like over four X here. And maybe his logic is just to really put a lot of pressure on these guys to not come along or squeeze. And then, you know, um, be able to just play a bigger pot where we can just play it in position versus a weak range.
Yeah, we have some, we have some conversation going, um, kept thinking he still wants to overland, so it's thirty-eight hundreds out there. Calling lets too many people in behind us and that's the big blind jam steal. I don't know if they're gonna jam though, because we're a hundred some odd bigs deep. Oh, the button, the button's got fourteen blinds. It's actually a pretty good spot for them to squeeze if we limp. I don't really even know-
Yeah, he can just squeeze jam. I mean, it's not bad because if he squeezed jams, we just, and he folds, we just have a snap call.
Yeah.
I don't think, like, if we, if we overlimp here, fourteen jams, we just snap. I mean-
I mean, I don't think limping behind is a mistake either. I think it's pretty close.
Yeah, and Jonathan even says weird spot, you know, in the title of this hand history in general, so, yeah.
I was gonna figure if I get a one more in, if not, I'm not out much. It's true, like, that's why I don't think limping is too bad. We also wanna try and get heads up. This doesn't make sense, we're, uh, wide array, it's already learning something this morning, that's funny. Um, thirty-eight hundred, so I see one, two thirty-eight hundreds, three thirty-eight hundreds, four thirty-eight hundred. What's up, Curly? And then I see one, two, three, twenty-four hundreds. It looks like thirty-eight hundreds are eking its way out in front.
Yeah, um, I'm thinking, uh, either thirty-four or twenty-four. Really don't hate twenty-four.
I don't either.
Um, just because when we have four players behind, if someone does wake up with a hand, we just lose a little bit less in the hole. Objective here seems to be get heads up with the weak player and not play too massive of a pot with the hand, you know. That isn't, you know, um, the nuts or, you know, the very top of our range here. So I'm gonna go twenty-four.
Cap says he'd actually go thirty-six hundred, uh, but that's not an option. I agree. Six and I, we both-
Yeah, I'd be thirty-two. Yeah, thirty-two would be my number.
Thirty-two is my exact number as well.
Yeah, it's four X, it's just four X over this, uh, a hundred bigs deep, about, you know, a hundred bigs deep, so. But I guess, um, maybe going, man, we're all a hundred bigs deep, this is tough.
Question, do you go thirty-two sixty-six because that's just like your calling card?
Yeah, just so you could-
You should start doing that. You should start ending all your bets in six-six.
Oh, that would be just nerve-wracking to try to type it in and stream, especially with battle line, just the time takes, just timing out of everything, yeah.
Alright, we're gonna go thirty-eight hundred because that's what the arm is doing.
Alright, guys, what do you guys think? What number? What up, VIP? So influential, I'm leaning towards a raise two now. I'm glad I could talk you guys into it. So twenty-four hundred, Journey, I'm giving you this one, we talked about this last night. Twenty-four hundred for the journey, man, let's do it.
Go.
Alright.
Well, we are going to raise against this particular opponent, but if you said limp, I think limping is certainly fine. I mean, hands like small pairs really enjoy seeing a cheap flop and a great way to see a cheap flop is to limp. Whereas if you raise, maybe you get re-raised sometimes or, um, you know, limp re-raised by the initial raiser, which would be awful. Like say I made it thirty-eight hundred here, the initial re-raiser makes it twelve thousand and now we have to fold and I really don't wanna fold. So limping's fine. If I am gonna raise, I'm gonna make it thirty-eight hundred to give myself some pre-flop fold equity. You do not wanna make it small here to three big blinds. Because when you make it three big blinds, now you just have no fold equity pre-flop and, you know, that isn't the end of the world when you have a very strong implied odds hand. That said, you also don't mind just getting a heads up and playing the pot in position. So I make it thirty-eight hundred, cutoff calls, and now the button goes all in. Should we fold? Call? Re-raise to twenty-one thousand or go all in?
Interesting, 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 interesting spot. We end up raising and still getting squeezed. What do you guys think here? Fold, call, raise to twenty-one thousand? Or damn it?
Alright, you there?
I'm here. I really thought you were gonna win that one, man. How many points did you get?
No, yeah, I, I like that. Good job, guys. A lot of people in my chat say, said go bigger.
Twenty-four hundred was, it's gotta be like eight points or something. It can't be that much difference, right? They gotta be really close.
No, it was actually six.
Six, okay.
So, yeah, he had-
It's just not quite big enough.
Right, yeah. And he made a good, he made a very good point and I like the point that he made. I mean, always in game with a hundred big blinds, for me, I would be at least four X.
Yeah, and like you went with that because it was closer to what you would do, um, because the other ones-
It was like in the middle, uh, like I just went with the smaller, but I mean, honestly-
You still said you were gonna do something in between. I mean, you were, you were, you were right.
Yeah, but sizing, eh, you know, we're, it's, it's just an interesting spot.
In game, you would've played this correct, you know, you would've-
No, I mean, I'm going over, you have to go over three K, I feel like, but we went twenty-four hundred on the small side just because the dealer button in this guy's kind of splashy and weak, but I like the point that he made and we're so deep that we should just go bigger, you know, why not? Hey, good morning, Nudus, how you doing, buddy?
Hang on a second, someone just gave me a follow here. What was that? Deep House Vibes, thank you for the follow, Jim Badger, thank you for all, follow, um. Yeah, um, JVD says he's skipping Saturday morning cartoons to watch us. Thanks for that, buddy. Uh, I got fold, fold.
You're getting three to one. I mean, are we really folding with a hundred big blind with the implied odds? A hundred big blinds getting three to one here? Um, I mean, this is just a snap call.
You know-
Am I insane?
You know, well, I don't think you're insane. I think this is just an ICMizer spot. You know what I mean? Like this is just a standard bad situation. My gut instinct with all the ICMizering that we do is that I, I'd be hard pressed not to at least call here. If we go twenty-one K, need jams for sixty more. I mean, I, I might, I can get down with clicking it back to get splashy the fuck out.
Yeah, but then when he has a hand like ace, king off, you know, ace, queen suited and jams on you. I mean, it's kinda-
But the problem is, is I guess you're gonna, I mean, wouldn't you three bet those pre?
Yeah, I mean, he is splashy, so his range in this spot, it is tricky. Hmm. So we're just gonna force get heads up with the hand, you know, it, the button's range isn't exactly like, nothing here.
Nudus says, what are you, a bunch of nets? Please shove it all in.
Just shove, huh? Crawl my lazy out of bed for this, oh, good. Ha ha. So Amy DeVergo says, folding here because of cutoff. If you call and I'm in the cutoff, I jam on you. Well, I mean, I would fly here with some very strong hands as well, for sure. Like, I'm just flying here with aces.
Well, that makes sense though, because you're not scared of boards. With Sixes, your hand is vulnerable to boards multi-way.
Yeah, but we're gonna just still balance that because we're gonna be calling here with some very strong hands in some cases as well.
So I would call here with like suited paint, obviously. Um, suited aces, obviously, and then like ace-
Are you less balanced when you raise here because you would likely call with aces and kings? Or would everyone be raising here versus a splashy, weak range and losing a lot of value? It feels like in some situations. We are at a position, but does he ever have anything when we make it twenty-one K to really go with? Hmm. Interesting spot.
Twenty-one K photo jams is the dude, all-in Oki, Cap says twenty-one. The cutoff can only continue twenty-one K with a big hand, I agree. Um, Nudus changes mind, raise twenty-one K and call is cool with me. Twenty-one K looks stronger than the jam, could look like inducing.
This is very interesting spot. I mean, we're getting three to one right away and we're still gonna be-
Cap's floating with his good pocket pairs.
You know, over a hundred bigs.
Seventy-seven, thanks for showing up, buddy, I appreciate you, man.
Let's see what we got in my chat. Personally, I'm folding. Famous Five says he's folding. Um, we got another fold.
Can we talk about why all-in is a mistake?
We really wanna be-
She'll knit her way to a better spot.
Oh, man. Yeah, I mean, we're really risking seven K here to potentially win a hundred big blind spot.
So the cool thing about the twenty-one K versus all-in is that if we go twenty-one K and they jam, we could easily fold. We're a hundred, started the hand a hundred bigs deep.
You maximize our fold equity, he's kind of splashy, he's got a lot of hands.
He just picks us off, we're screwed. This way, at least we have, we have a way out and twenty-one K should be scary enough to get this guy to fold. Um, I don't remember who it was in there, but, um, to get them to fold anything that's mediocre and we get heads up with the squeeze. Uh, JVD says, are we set mining here? So set mining, we need, do we be getting fifteen to one? And this is about a six K call. So we are like, barely in that range for set mining. But I'd rather get heads up for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we are set mine. I mean, we, we still have the right price too, right? Like, I don't know. I mean, I, I'd be lean towards a call here, but I, I'd really like the twenty-one K option as well. Because a lot of his range will be some of those ace, jack offs, you know, ace, jack, king, queen suited, king, jack, jack, ten suited, um, if he's splashy and, you know, this deep, you know, even maybe even some worse pairs that might just flick in a set mine, we can just make fold some ace tens. It feels like it's gonna be in his range. And at a position, it's gonna be really hard, uh, to play a lot of textures. So maybe twenty-one K would be nice. So maybe twenty-one K would be nice. Now I'm talking myself into raising and making a crazy pot. Now I'm talking myself, yeah, it is the nuts, but I'm gonna have to pull up and jam nuts when he shoves. Um, yeah, I'll probably take the, it made an event, it probably just flat.
I'm going twenty-one K, uh, most, uh, it's pretty tied, uh, actually, it's tied between fold, which I think is a mistake.
Alright.
And twenty-one K, um.
I don't wanna fold, I'm not folding, so, anybody, so do I go call or twenty-one K, guys? What do you like in my chat? Anybody, first person that says. I went my journey last time, now I'm gonna have to go, jam it in there, not happening. Uh, twenty-one K, alright, we're doing it, twenty-one K it is.
Alright, we're doing it, Sam.
Alright, let's do it.
This is.
Twenty-one K, boys.
The cutoff is a splashy player, right? Given the cutoff's relatively splashy, this is not a reason to think that. The cutoff has a very strong hand, so I think in this scenario, we can essentially min re-raised about twenty-one thousand. And then put the opponent in a pretty bad spot where the cutoff needs to fold a ton, and also notice whenever we put in twenty-one thousand, we're really only putting in. What, six thou- or seven thousand more into a pot that's going to be like twenty-five thousand, or no, how many, how much will it be? Twenty-seven thousand? So we don't need to win all that often at all, and you may say, yeah, but sixes aren't in great shape, right? Well. They're in okay shape, but you're gonna find that the button has a lot of big cards, which is great. We're probably gonna have about forty percent equity in this pot, and if we know we can put in seven thousand or six thousand more, seven thousand more, to try to win a pot of twenty-seven. Means we only need to re, we need to have twenty-five percent equity, and we're gonna have something like forty percent equity on average, so, I like a min re-raised, we don't really wanna call. Cause when we call now, the cutoff's gonna call just every single time, and that's quite bad. We also don't wanna jam, because, uh, the cutoff may randomly decide to hero call it off with, um, a hand like pocket jacks or ace-king, and we'd much rather avoid those scenarios. Especially in the World Series main event, so we do click it back, and to our surprise, the cutoff calls, alright. Thought comes king, king five, should we check, bet fifteen thousand, bet thirty thousand, or bet forty-five thousand?
Wow, this got, this got weird.
What y'all doing out there? You checking now, betting fifteen, betting thirty, betting forty-five, get your answers out there in the chat, this got weird.
It's just got super weird, dude.
I mean, don't answer this question yet, what does Pile like you to do on all paired boards?
We're at a position in this case, yeah, me too, I mean, we have to, right?
Yeah, well, Whisco says fifteen K.
But let's see, let's see what all these other guys, let's see what chat says, but I know what, we both know what we're doing here.
Fifteen K from Dudearino, fifteen K from Whisco, thirty K from Nudus.
What are you guys doing here, chat?
Taking twelve and fif- lots of fifteen Ks in my chat, forty-five from Curly, to put some heat on it.
Deverago says, bet large, thirty K for me, this, I'm sorry, here's the sizings, fifteen K, thirty K, forty-five K, apologize. Fifteen K for Famous Fives, let a few more people throw in, uh, a couple of their options. Why are you guys going large? And why are you guys going fifteen K?
King just is checking, he's done with his hand, he taps, a surrender.
He checks and surrenders on king, king, five. Um, you wanna elaborate on this one?
Do I wanna elaborate?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, I mean, I think we got a lot of options out there.
Jonathan's gonna check, thirty is half our stack committed, forty-five is two-thirds of that committed, might as well jam for that to map, yeah, so Pile basically likes us to bet, uh, quarter pot.
Or small, yeah, we gotta go small this.
With our entire range on paired boards like this.
But it is a different situation where we're at a position, um, in a spot we raised, but it's a paired board. Uh, this is probably as good as it's gonna get for our hand.
Definitely is.
Does have some auto give up, some ace-queen, some ace-Jack suiteds, um, you know, some hands like that.
Weird suited paint, suited aces that aren't diamonds.
Yeah, we just, yeah, yeah, ace-Jack of spades and shit like that.
Yeah, and then, uh, you know, pocket pairs are coming along no matter what, so we get it done for the minimum.
Yeah, I mean, if we go a large sizing and he has pocket jacks or something like that, I mean, eh, his, you'd almost say his continuing range is gonna be. Damn near inelastic to any size, so we should maybe use a smaller sizing with a lot of our range to get some of his auto give ups to go away. You know, and then the rest of the range is gonna continue no matter what, damn near, it's not like if I go thirty K. You might lose, you might get sevens or something like that to fold, but sevens also might call, you know.
Ecard says, it's his opinion that the flop hits the cutoff more than it hits ours, I think checking is about option, this is a. Four-bet pot, right? And then we're gonna C-bet, so like, this hits us both, right? We both have the same ace-kings. Um, and probably the same king-queen suiteds, right? And then we both have all the same pocket pairs, I think our ranges are pretty damn.
But I mean, uh, yeah, it just comes down to be slow-playing some of the very top of his range, and if he would be raising his ace-kings. You know, ace-king offsuit, ace-king suited, ace-queen hands at any point, because if he's not, you know, his range is kind of weakened and captain is certain.
Would you argue that because we know this player is splashy, this hits our range more than his? Cause he's gonna have a lot of weird shit, like.
And if you omit some of the times you think he would be, you know, three or, three-betting, ace-kings, aces-kings and things like that. Where he would normally, you know, um, not just have so many auto calls, and then he has a weaker call, a wider calling range, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, Cap says, we have aggression edge, I agree, uh, if check can look like a give up, if I'm gonna cutoff, checks to me and peanut butter jam, sandwich time, therefore. Yeah, I mean, I don't really wanna check jam this, that's my problem, I'm like, Jesus Christ, if I check jam this, I guess I get like eights, nines, tens to fold. Jacks, what do jacks do in that spot? Yeet.
Yeah.
Um, stuff like that, like, I guess you put pressure on those hands, so you do get better to fold, but holy hell, I'd rather bet fifteen K and give up.
Yeah, I mean, we'll see, but, uh, it feels like, uh, betting fifteen K is just gonna be the option. So it looks like a lot of my chats at fifteen K, we did have a thirty K from froze status, what up, my dude, Jean-Paul, what's up, guys?
I agree that he's not folding a hand like nine or ten, king deuces, but he is folding a lot of hands that have good equity against us, like suited paint and asex.
Yeah, um, and it feels like if, uh, you, you may argue when he continue, when he calls this, he's just gonna continue a lot. Here with a lot of his range and doing, we're just gonna be betting once and giving up, um, so, I don't, I just don't think we can just check, give up.
No, King says, we still have to beat the all-in guy, but the thing is, is that guy's all-in and we've already called that, so there's no more chips in play there, like that. That's already done, those chips are already either ours or not, right? Like, so we can't worry about that. Just have to worry about getting this guy out of the pot, so we can get heads up with.
I mean, splashy ain't pulling for fifteen K, well, we'll see, but, alright.
Most of my chats have fifteen, man, out the gate.
Yeah, alright, let's try, let's run it and see if we can nail this one.
Yep, let's do it.
Let's do it, I don't know, guys.
I think in general, we should probably go ahead and bet small, and the reason I think we need to bet small. Is because in this spot, if we can make the cutoff fold out anything, that's fantastic, and I think you're gonna find that people play very fit or fold in this spot. Where if I bet even fifteen thousand and the cutoff calls or raises, I think we're gonna be in pretty bad shape, whereas if I check. He may bet with a very wide range, like ace-Jack or something, which would be terrible, because I really, really, really. Uh, don't want to give my opponent just an, an easy bluff spot, right? Whereas I think, if I think I, yeah, I can't talk. If I bet fifteen thousand and the opponent then called or raises, it forces them to be kind of face up, because I could just have ace-king here, right? If I have ace-king or even king-queen, it's clearly never folding, so the opponent can't get too out of line if I bet, so. We do go fifteen thousand, notice I don't wanna go any bigger, because if I start going bigger, like thirty or forty-five thousand, then. I'm just risking more money than necessary, so I really just wanna find the amount that will force the opponent to play straightforwardly, and. I realize fifteen thousand is not a big bet, but I do think fifteen thousand will get that job done. So I do bet fifteen thousand, get called, and at this point, I expect to be against a lot of pairs, maybe good flush draws, maybe like ace-queen every once in a while. And, uh, we get a pretty good turn, we drill the six of diamonds, should we check, bet fifteen thousand? Bet thirty thousand, or go all-in?
It's the nuts, who folded?
Alright.
Who checked folded? So I'm going crazy, I was saying, it's the nuts.
Fucking nuts, dude.
Who checked folded?
The nuts. Yeah, if you fold at any point, you don't hit the nuts.
I mean, what a beautiful card too, cause the flush does come in as well, King is never folding, like, good spot, good spot.
A great spot, um, SPR is just, this is just a dream, look at the SPR, now. What do you guys think in this spot? I kinda have, I know it toes, I'm pretty sure I know what it is gonna say.
I know what I'm doing in game, but I think there's a better move than what I would instinctually do. So, let's see, bet thirty K says, Ginger, realize we only have fifty-five K left in our stack, just so to make sure you can see the numbers good. Um, this never happens to me, says Cap.
This happens to me all the time, so I'm.
I have toe equity and you have this.
Yes, yes, we got a couple of different options here, and, uh, I know what you're gonna do, and.
Um, they're calling fifteen K on the.
Splash ain't folding, jam it in there, honestly, like a check, give him one shot to jam it in there on his own. I'm checking, but I'm a dunk.
Check to make. So splashy, so here's my thought on that, cause I was thinking about this earlier, checks, we wanted to bluff. Um, so, um.
Here's the options, guys.
Oh, splashy, my thought on splashy, just because they're splashy doesn't mean they're aggressive, right? That just means they play a lot. So like, if I check here, I can't just assume he's gonna jam, I guess is my, my point.
Yeah, this is interesting.
What are you doing?
We got, oh, bet sizes, uh, we have here, check fifteen K, thirty K, or go all in.
Cap says, we risk a boat coming in, I don't give up, uh, we're just going broke here, I know. We have a full house, we're just, you got the full house. Matt says, whatever he's calling on that flop is likely not folding, so we get the value now, Beach does not want to check back. Don't wanna let a river card kill action, jam, says Matt.
I don't think there's anything, well, we got a couple of different options, maybe he turns his hand, and see, this is where we differ sometimes.
For me, there's two options.
I know we differ when we study a lot in these kinda spots, I feel like, you know, um. When we go small there after three batting, some of our range is kind of weak, and it may give him an opportunity to bluff. The SPR is such that if we check here, he has an opportunity to turn a hand into a bluff, overvalue something. Um, or on the river, you know, if he does have something like ace-queen with the. You know, ace-queen or something like that with the ace of diamonds, he floated for a bet that's small, he has another opportunity to get there with some even worse value hands that might stack off. Uh, so, I'd be prone to check in this spot with the SPRs being such. But I know we talk about this and it's bet the nuts, I know bet the nuts is a real thing, um, so I'm, I'm conflicted every time I'm in these spots.
Because I am such an advocate for bet the nuts, check is out of the question for me?
Oh, yeah, check is, yeah.
But I can see not jamming, I think thirty K is, is a red herring, like, we can't bet thirty K, I mean.
I think it's fifteen again, I mean, I could see that.
Exactly what I was gonna say, because we wanna eke along all his single diamond hands and his pairs that will still come along. King-X is gonna come along no matter what, flush is gonna jam no matter what, so, I think when we go all-in, we only get caught by flushes and kings. And some kings might even find a fold.
If we what? If what?
If we jam.
Yeah, I don't think we need to jam, maybe go at fifteen K again, he's still getting a great price with almost all of his range to continue with, you kinda, yeah, I kinda like that again. Honestly, I think thirty K is a little bit too big, but fifteen K again, um, we keep the betting lead. And it gives us another opportunity to get, cause if we jam here, he honestly could fold like king-Jack without a doubt.
He says, why never checking?
In the main.
Failure, but maybe, never checking, because I always bet the nuts. Um, that doesn't mean always jam the nuts or pound on the nuts, you know, with a giant bet, but I have the nuts, I am betting, it's a tragedy. If he's got, uh, a king here and then checks back because the flush came in, and then another diamond comes on the river and we lose him, like, that's a tragedy.
We missed, yeah, we missed bets there, that's why, you know, I could see. You know, uh, the side of me that really wants to kinda trap, but at the same time, I know we study a lot, and I, I bet the nuts here, just said it, cause I can hear. You guys in my fucking head.
Yeah, and if he's gotta care like eights, nines, tens.
Find the bet.
Jacks, queens, like, we don't, without a diamond, we're, we might be able to get another bet here for fifteen.
Yep.
Um, with those hands, especially if with a diamond, um, we're definitely getting another bet from those hands, uh, and we don't wanna get a chance to, to lose that opportunity.
Yeah, the splashy player, if he's getting a good price with anything, or if he already has a made king. He could even jam, he could jam a flush if we make a small bet, so, yeah, I mean, I think we go fifteen K again, I, I really like it. And then it makes him more committed on rivers that blank out if he has just like king-ten, king-Jack or something. Um, or a flush, he might just feel compelled to call it off with the SPRs.
Cap says, uh, but we can still jam river if he checks, we don't need to build the pot any bigger, uh, I disagree, we have the nuts, we wanna build the pot as big as possible. And, and if we jam river, he's just gonna fold, like, s- everything that's not a king or diamonds. And this way, we get value from a lot of things that have a single diamond in. You know what I mean? Um, so, yeah, but Nudus says he's gonna throw us for a loop and end up checking, might be, it's happened before. And matter of fact, we have a perfect score right now, so like, this is where shit might go south, Guru, thank you for the follow.
Yeah, I mean, I like fifteen K, like, honestly, like, my, my gut, I mean, my intuition, like, just old school, just wants to check here. I, I honestly, but I mean, working, you know, working on our game, I think we can still just bet here, um, a lot, but my gut says really just boop. You know, easy, cause it looks like we give up, blah, 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 but, yeah, let's, uh, do it as we should be doing it in game. And go with the bet size since we're trying to.
Cause most of the chats said that, that's fine.
Yep, let's do it, guys.
Well, this is great, clearly, in this scenario, we now just wanna give our opponent every opportunity to do something silly in case they did call with random ace-queen offsuit. Or if they have a pair, right? I wanna do everything I can to make my hand look vulnerable and weak, especially since the opponent is splashy. Given the opponent's splashy, it's, you know, kind of likely that they may just take a stab here and make a really poor bet with a hand like. Pocket jacks, thinking, alright, I'm gonna bet and see where I stand, and notice, we only have, whatever this is, two-thirds pot remaining, so it's not like we're all that deep. So in this scenario, if I am going to bet, I think a small bet is definitely the right size, so just do everything we can to keep our opponents marginal stuff in. But I definitely like checking in general, especially if I have any indication that the opponent thinks that they have a pretty good hand. You may say, well, would your opponent really even bet the turn with a hand like pocket jacks or even king-Jack? Uh, some people will, some people won't, also, you know, if the opponent has a flush, we're always gonna stack him, so we're not worried about that. If they have ace-king and it goes check, check on the turn, we're probably gonna stack him unless it comes a diamond, which would be very unfortunate, but, um. Given the opponent did not raise the flop, I think we can discount kings a little bit, that said, the opponent should just call the flop with a king. This is a weird scenario where I don't really know what exactly the opponent's doing, but I do know the opponent's probably drawing dead or nearly dead. So I wanna give the opponent every possible opportunity to do something silly, so I do check, and the opponent jams. Should we call or fold?
Real? Is this real?
I wanna flip fold so bad, you gotta balance your folding range.
Yeah, it's just a real call, I mean, easy snap call, and if he says, alright, guys, you gotta fold here, it's the main event, and the guy's. Only doing this with quad kings, I'm gonna shit my pants. The guy's only doing this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just drop a deuce right here in this seat.
Uh, yeah, sucks that the, uh, answer was check, you know what's funny about it? Because we said in game, we would probably do some different things here. But like, I know I see him bet these spots in previous quizzes, I know, that's one of those.
But I mean. You know what, honestly, though, like, my, the, like, instinctually, when we have an SPR, like you said, two-third pot, and. We bet small on that board, like, we talked about with a lot of our range, right? Like, we just use a small bet sizing there to fold out some stuff, so we're going to have some hands that we just give up with. And he's going to have some bluffs on that pre, you know, that's, you know, he's just going to turn his hand into a bluff sometimes.
Agreed.
That's, that's kind of what, and then if he doesn't turn his hand into a bluff, he picks up a worse value, and we jam anyway, or we bet something different anyway. We have another street to do so, and this is where we always argue in the, when we're studying some of these kinda spots. But at the same time, it's close at the same time.
That's sad for life, thank you for that follow, welcome, buddy, um, yeah, man, uh, I agree, I'm sad, I'm sad I lost the ten points on that one.
Alright. Yeah, yeah, let's just snap call and do, yeah, there's nothing else to do.
Relatively, so, we're gonna call, do not fold here thinking, oh, what if I'm against king-six, haha, right? It's pretty much impossible, so. Easy, easy call, and we're against a random pocket nines, notice also the guy who went all-in from the button had ace-Jack, so. We had the flip, so that was fine for that money, I would really have hoped that the re-raised to twenty-one thousand would have made the opponent fold the nines pre-flop. But clearly it didn't, so maybe that idea was a little bit optimistic, um, but in general, I think this hand is, is perfectly fine. Obviously, if I missed a six on the turn, I was just check folding, so we would have played very well on the turn, um, when we miss. So, yes, we get a little bit lucky on the turn, maybe a lot lucky on the turn, but I think we really got a lot lucky that the opponent put their whole stack in on the turn with. Relatively little equity.
Go. Hey, what's up, John? Good to see you, man.
That was a fun one.
That was a fun one, man.
That was, that was cool.
We had the perfect score and whiffed it at the buzzer.
Dude, this is the main event, boys, this happened in the main event, somebody punted, hunted to our levels. With a hundred bags, boom, nines, dead, yeah, done, so, yeah, this is the main event, get in there, sadies, let's go. I do not believe it was the main event, she says, no, it was the WSOP main event, yep, no, oh, it happens. I've, I've played the main twice, it happens, pots happen, alright, let's see what we got.
Alright, um, six.
Let's see, what looks attractive?
Do you have six eighteen, you might not have that one.
Why is it locked? Wait a minute. Yeah, it's unlocked, it's green.
That's a ten K WPT if you wanna keep it high roller.
Ooh, let's look at another high roller, boys. And girls. Alright, whoops.
Alright, can I play the video?
Yep, I'm gonna mute it.
Here we are playing a ten thousand dollar buy in world poker tour event in the small blind with jack nine of hearts against a loose aggressive player. We're playing only twenty five big lines deep. Should we fold? Call? Raise to five thousand? Or raise to eight thousand?
Alright. You go through it?
Um, yes, uh, limbs to us in the blind.
Limbs to us in a blind, well, the big ball is not splashy, it's laggy, beastie. If the big blind is splashy again, I'm jamming, so we're gonna have a twenty five big blind jam, he doesn't even have that as an option here.
Honestly, it's probably profitable. King and deuce small, show calls, dude Reno calls, ginger calls. Beats calls.
Everybody in your chat's calling, we got a five K in mind. What do you guys like in this spot? Call is good too. Don't be shy, boys and girls out there, what are we doing? I like, uh, yeah, I'd probably just like calling, uh, if he does make it seven, eight K, we can just call. Um, I don't know if we wanna use this as a limp. Raise, probably not, not limp jamming it, but it plays well enough, uh, if we raise to five or eight K and he raises, we just piss away all that equity. This hand plays well post flop.
Yeah, I agree, limp call.
Yeah, limp call, yeah, it's just, I mean, we can call, we can call up the four X here, um, it plays well enough, so yeah, I'm not really worried. It would just suck to raise to five or eight K and get shot on, cause you can just jam a lot of hands, you can just jam ace ten, ace nine.
And the general thought process, I mean, in general, and it's even more so against uh, aggressive players, you wanna do a lot of limping and a lot of them calling and folding. Excuse me, blind versus blind, cause they're gonna make your life tough, um, if you had a hand like jack nine off and you wanted to raise that, I can get behind that more. Because that one, if we raise and we get that off, we don't really give a shit.
Right.
Would we jam eighteen bigs here? That's a good question.
It depends, haha, just depends, I mean, how, what's the stack behind, you know, I mean, I, yeah, I wouldn't hate it.
Because limp call, we can't limp call at that point.
No, in our hand, it's just gonna play well and be live versus some of his call range. Um, it's probably, it's definitely probably profitable, I would say that, and in my chat, we said I would limp call, what's up JJ? Get in the shats. Uh, we got a limp call here. Yeah, I think we just call, let's see what Jonathan does here, but I'd be surprised if he didn't call.
Uh, Oki says, figure he's lag, so if he's raising any call, the problem is, is we only have twenty five bigs, and if we raise this and he raises us now. Like, this pot is big and we're in trouble, like, it's just an easier pot to play if we limp call. Um, cause we keep the pot smaller, we guarantee we get to see the flop that way. And don't like putting a massive portion of our fragile stack. Know what I mean?
For sure. Alright, let's do it.
Alright, call.
This is a spot where I am basically always limping, this hand flops amazingly well. If we raise. Reraced, that is awful, notice if we do raise to six thousand or eight thousand. Yes, the opponent could call, but even then we're out of position with. Jack high, which, you know, we have a hand that flops well, but it's not like we're loving it, and if we raise and get jammed, then we have to fold, which is terrible, so, if we limp. We can easily call any raise and that is exactly what you wanna be doing. Just to show you all real quick, these are the implementable GTO charts. On pokercoaching.com, this is the twenty five big line, small blind strategy, you see, all these good suited hands are just like very clear limbs. You limp and then call a raise. And, um, you all should know that, you all should know like these, these hands right in here, these suited hands, these are hands that really want to see the flop. So, we're limping these hands every time, also notice we are limping a few pairs, a few good aces, ace two suited looking to limp, limp jam. Um, they were limp folding some of the junkier hands, so, that's generally the strategy, but you're gonna find like all of these good suited hands that. You know, clearly flop well, you want to make sure that you see the flop. So. Let's limp. Opponent checks. Flop comes, eight, seven, six. Should we check? Bet two thousand? Bet four thousand? Or bet six thousand?
Matt says always ask, because to ask himself, what did we get raised, that should be number one question. Well, there's like five, I'm going off here, there's like five basic questions in poker, if you break it down into simple, simplest things.
Oh, man.
Um, question number one is, are we betting for value or betting as a bluff? We're betting for value, what's worse, that's gonna call, betting as a bluff, what's better, that's gonna fold? And then the other, so the next follow-up question also after that is, if we bet, what do we do if we get raised, cause you always wanna have a plan.
Yep, those are three very important questions, so when we bet here and we get raised. I mean, we going with it, um, he does have some two pair, you know, he does have four, five, um, probably doesn't have sets. Some combo draws or diamonds, do we wanna check call out of position, do we wanna check raise? Uh, a lot of interesting decisions here.
Kep, we have new overlays coming, both of us, um, that'll have it, so it looks better and we can lay it out better. And you'll be able to see both of us at the same time, so that's all coming.
Yep.
I really wish it was a heart on the flop too.
A lot of my chat is saying limp lead for men right here in this spot. And then if we get raised, go with it.
Good question, what do you use as indicators for a player that is lag, more simply what actions by your opponent will tell us this? So if your opponent is three batting a lot, has been raising first hand and entering pots a lot and double barreling a lot. Just bet, 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 I mean, generally if you're playing a guy with a screen name like Crazy Sixes or Dodge Hotel. And those are the type of guys that you're talking about here, you know?
Yeah, just usually pretty active players, um, later positions, three batting, uh, just overall, just more active. In general, you know, looking for more spots. If he's aggro, I might check shove the flop. We can always. What do you like here, man?
Sorry, Oki, I have to mess with the volume, cause things get weird here between Skype and the, and the browser, uh, equities weren't close. We got two overs, a gutter to the nut nut. I've hit both of the ring just pretty well. Same flop, yes, looked good for a second, we took yourself out, only during the replay though, yeah, that was full screen, but we need the advertising and whatnot. So it's coming, buddy, um, I, because this is laggy, I'm definitely checking. So that's, for sure.
Yeah, it just feels like hell, cause if you're just trying to think like, what am I gonna do if I raised, you know?
And this does hit both ranges well, on twenty five, four bigs, I know that we could check jam probably.
Yeah, I mean, we can make a six X, seven X, five X, all hands that might stab and some random bluffs fold, and we run pretty. Good equity versus just like top pair or something random, and he has worse draws.
We get a seven to fold or.
I honestly may check this board, because when we bet and he calls and we, and it's a blank on the turn, our lives are pretty tough as well.
And the fact that he's laggy means he's gonna bet a lot, right?
Yeah, and if he goes sixty four hundred, maybe we can, you know, make the decision, you know, check jamming or check calling at that point, he may just go two K, he may just check. Which will lead us to staffs and turn, so yeah, I kinda like just checking here, man.
We do.
Like, just, yeah, just leading here for one of these sizes, and then when we get raised, we're just. Putting it in in a real fucking weird spot where we can be either pretty behind or running pretty close equities versus other draws and. Semi made hands.
Pair and draw combos.
Very awkward, um, equities and hands when we get it in, and we can just be way behind. Yep, let's try it.
We have a few options here, we can bet big, like four thousand or six thousand, but if we bet big and get raised, it's pretty awful, right? And this is a board where the opponent will raise some portion of the time, because this, this should nail a checking behind range pretty hard, right? Kinda like I wanted to see a flop with this medium connected hand, the opponent should wanna see a flop with a lot of his medium connected hands, so. I definitely don't like big, cause if we bet big, that's going to induce a larger raise, and right here, I'd really not like to get blown off my hand. So I'm either gonna bet small, like two thousand, so if the opponent does raise to six thousand or eight thousand, I can then jam on my opponent. Or I can check, and if I check and the opponent bets, we can then either, um, call or raise, depending on. You know, the vibe we get at the table. Um, whenever you do have a draw, you always wanna figure out how you can be the person putting in the last bet, the person who has fold equity. You don't wanna be betting and then having to call, and that's what's a call and all in, which is what will happen if we bet six thousand, so either check or bet small. I think I typically prefer a small bet, just cause that gives you fold equity, if the opponent has anything that, that completely misses, they're gonna fold. Um, but I checked this time, so sure, goes check, check, turns a jack, hello. Should we check? Bet two thousand? Bet four thousand? Or bet six thousand?
The thing about it kept too, is like checking isn't a huge mistake, like eight versus ten points, it's very close, like Jonathan said, it's definitely not a mistake, um.
Alright.
At all.
Hey, what's up, T dub?
Uh, so yeah, it was, uh, we got eight points for the check, but like you said, super close, it's not, definitely not a mistake.
No, it's absolutely not, I'm sure it's probably a very close if we put the equities in, so, uh, what's gonna be better between checking and betting in that spot? That is very close.
Uh, Matt says now we bet small for value and charge draws, check turns is Wizco, so we got some controversy there. Matt likes to play both. Bet small, charge draws, or bet big? And then you pick the middle bet. How, how middle of the road can you get, Matt? Said maybe the small bet, maybe the big bet, I'm gonna choose the little, but the medium bet. Uh, that's funny. Uh, big one to you, bad, nine and a half for four K.
Yeah, I like a bigger bet here, honestly, um.
I'm pretty conflicted.
Between checking again and just check calling. Cause this, this does, I mean, it's pretty comfortable check call here. Although I think some of it is like seven X, six X, jack X, uh, nine tens. Like, I'm sure you might have like, I think jack ten would probably bet in this spot with two overs and a gut shot in position.
Wait, I don't know on this board, maybe, maybe not, um.
Queen jack would probably raise pre-flop, uh, just raise us pre-flop and we complete there. Um, honestly, I may like just betting four K here and getting value from what? There's some worse jack X.
So he can have jack Ds. Jacks, let's see, let's see about worse jack X, jack eight, jack seven, jack six has two pair, jack five has a pair in an open ender. So you're talking specifically about jack two, jack three and jack.
And then like a six and seven X, we think would be betting, uh, you know, in position here, at least some frequency when we just check.
Did he specify this is a good lag player, cause a good lag player should not be betting.
Yeah, we block nine, ten. Do we wanna just deny equity from like a king or a queen X, you know, a lot and just bet here, and a ten isn't bad for us either?
I know for me, top pair shit kicker, I am checking this out of position, for sure. Uh, Nud, Kep says two thirds pot.
What do you guys, what are you guys doing here? Jackets are range harder.
So ace four probably bails.
Got four K. Oh, man, interesting spot. What's up, everybody just joining?
Hold out random over cards, we started with twenty five bigs, I'm happy to cash out now, I can see that argument. You check a lag player, bets a high percentage of the time, don't wanna get raised or go broke, I agree with dude Reno, that's why we study together. Um, so I, I'm with dude Reno on this one myself.
Just check, yeah, I mean, we don't have a two street hand, when we bet, turn any, we do get called. I mean, how many times, how many cards can we just bet river confidently again, maybe block bet sometime? Yeah, it'd be a lot of block bets, so maybe we just have easy check calls. And then maybe turn some worse hands into bluffs when we check twice. Uh, yeah, I kinda like a check.
Scary rivers, right? Like a queen, a king or an ace suck, and then the straights are all great for us, and a diamond sucks a little bit. Um, but we're still gonna check call, you know what I mean, and that's it.
Yeah, and I think we'd be raising a lot of his ace X pre-flop, maybe some like ace deuce. Check is going to check back all his flush draws, I think we'd be betting flush draws, um, at some point here on the turn for sure. We check twice, especially the ones with no showdown value, you probably should be betting like queen deuce of diamonds at this point.
Argument from, uh, Kep saying that lag bets a flush draw on the flop, probably, fair?
Yeah, I mean, sure, I mean, absolutely.
Uh, Matt says he doesn't wanna give free cards to draws, the only thing is like, we're on the monster draw. Yeah, we block the nuts, like, we have the draw in our back pocket too, so that's cool.
Yeah.
Be betting already, or he's gonna bet now, like, it's cool.
Yeah, it's cause there's so many of his diamond draws, he's just gonna need to turn their hands into bluff with no showdown, and we check twice, so he should feel confident about maybe turning some of those hands into a bluff. Getting us to fold out air, so yeah, I think check.
But we got top, we got pair to value, but the problem is, is we don't have the nuts, and we gotta.
Who said?
King and deuce has nailed it, made marginal hands, so we check.
Okay, T dub says I like that big, fuck it, we're going four K. I'm, I'm, every, every one, once every hand, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick somebody and check where I think the line could be close and make some sense. Uh, and just roll with my boys. We go down together, it's gonna cost me ten bucks every week, so you're checking, we're betting.
If we're gonna go down, we're gonna go down together in flames, I love it.
Yeah, if we're gonna go down chat, we gonna go down together, boys, much love, let's go with your T dubs, let's do it, buddy, he's betting four K, I'm betting four K, cause he's the go.
That's good.
Let's go. Let's do it, let's try it. The more we do this, the more I'll get better, yeah, we'll get better together, I personally think checked, but, uh, let's see, four K kinda.
That's gonna be a lot of. Random high card hands, right, like ace high, king high, queen high, some of those have a jack with them, right? The ones that don't have a jack with them are.
He's a well.
If he happens to have me beat with ace, jack, king, jack, queen, jack, jack ten, I would rather keep the pot small, right? Um, obviously the opponent could have a hand like nine, six, that decides to bet in the turn, but notice that's fine.
Listen up, listen, listen.
And if the opponent does have a marginal made hand and it goes check, check on the turn, we're gonna bet the river, using a big size and the opponent's just not gonna fold. So, this is a spot where when playing twenty five big lines deep, I don't think we just want to get all of our money in. Um, so I think I prefer checking, if we are gonna bet though, we wanna be betting on the big side. Because the board is very coordinated and should connect with the opponent's range pretty well, so if we are gonna bet, we wanna bet big, but I do think checking is probably the ideal play. So we do check, opponent bets four thousand. Do we fold? Call? Raise to twelve thousand or go all in?
That was awesome, man, you were talking the whole time and I, I had you muted. I was so sad that the audience couldn't hear you on my side, cause it was awesome. I had already clicked, check, and you were still talking about it, and so I was making faces.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mute my mic, I'm sorry if you could hear me.
No, it was awesome, I wish they could have heard it. Uh, everyone, what's up, buddy, good to see you, man?
So wait a minute, I gotta say something, once a chat, once a hand history review, once a quiz, I'm sorry. I'm going to call on one of you guys in chat and put you on the spot, and I need you to come up big for me, okay, guys, so be ready.
I actually like that, I might be doing that too.
Yeah, like, it's, it's fun, I'm gonna have to call somebody out and put them on the spot.
Everybody in my chat saying call.
Well, he did kinda just, in his explanation of why we check, he kinda did say why. He said it in there, like, I don't think there's anything else to do, he, he gave the answer while he was explaining his thought process on why we check in the first place. Gonna make me stop multitasking again, hey, yeah, I have to call you guys out, be ready, if you're gonna give your opinion on a hand, I wanna know why and what we, we're gonna use it. Um, yeah, I think we just call here, guys.
Matt, you're killing me, man. He says, easy call, and then two checks later, he's raised, question mark?
Okay, that sounds, yep, that's about Matt.
Definitive, you know the answer. And what's worse is, I know you know, so you get no slack, motherfucker. Alright, real call, let's move on. Alright, real call, let's move on.
Let's let's move on.
This seems like a very, very nice check call to me, we have what I view as a very, very marginal, a good marginal made hand. But very clearly in the marginal made hand category. Um so let's check call, right, we can easily check call here and most rivers are gonna be easy enough for us, sometimes we're gonna river a straight, which is great. Remember, whenever you have a pretty good made hand and a draw, the pretty good made hand is usually what's an override your decision-making process. It'd be a little bit different here if I had something like. Uh six, five, maybe you wanna turn six, five into a bluff. By check raising, but realize we're not check raising jack nine because we want to get all of our money in here with top pair marginal kicker, right? We'd rather keep the pot reasonable with top pair marginal kicker. So we do check call. River's a king, we're gonna check every river, even if we made a straight, we would check. Because like I said on the previous street, the opponent has a lot of um just like unpaired hands, and we really wanna let unpaired hands bluff whenever we make a straight. So we check, opponent now bets ten thousand. Should we fold?
What y'all think?
Raise to twenty two thousand? Or go all in?
Matt says he's mad, he's leveling me.
Alright.
Is funny.
Let's see what we got, we got a couple of calls.
Uh yeah. I mean, I know how I forgot this spot, but I'll everyone in there, Curly's in there with a call.
Yeah, I don't see a full jet, we got a couple of calls in there.
Side call from Cap.
I mean, I just don't understand, I don't see how this. Interacts with his range so much, of course, he could have backed into like a king, six, I don't think he has king, jack ever. Um king ten or something like that, just a random king X, but at the same time, I think when he bluffs turn. He's gonna feel compelled to bluff river as well. Oh yeah, he's just gonna feel compelled to bluff with some of his missed diamonds when it's an over or five X. Yeah, oh he would have considered folding a diamond river, yeah, Kip Kaba, I I can see that as well, he just makes. He had just had more value hands in that spot.
Yeah, dude, I said gotta call once they check call on the turn, I agree, our hand is too strong to fold and it's too weak to raise and. He's laggy, so he's gonna be more apt to bluff. And so we just call and pick this off, like it sucks, and I have a bunch of calls, I have a side call and a call side. Call, 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 call grandma.
Anybody going all in or anything? We just have a bluff catcher, I don't see why we would turn this into a bluff. This is interesting, I think it's just.
It's a landslide call in my chat.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything outside of calls, it looks pretty standard to everybody out there, um yeah, I think we just call. You wanna just roll it and see what happens cuz I think, I don't think there's much to discuss, I don't think we just turn a bluff catcher into a block, uh. A bluff catcher, we don't need to turn it into a bluff and he just has too many bluffs in our range.
Agreed, and we're still beat here a decent amount of time.
Yeah, yeah, and he says if it's not a laggy, yeah, this guy, the fact that he's a lag player as well, good point, T-Dubs, yeah, because of that as well. But yeah, let's do it.
This is about the easiest call in the world, only way you could possibly fold this is if you just can look and tell your opponent loves their hand. Like if you think they have the nuts, then maybe you can justify folding, but the jack was a pretty good bluff card for the opponent.
This is like the easiest call in the world.
King is a very good bluff card on the river cuz I probably don't have a whole lot of kings, check calling the turn. So. This is a fantastic spot for the opponent to be bluffing, of course, the opponent could have been bluffing with a king and they will value bet a king on the river, but. We need to be good here like thirty something percent of the time and we just will, so. Easy call.
Oh no, Cap's got a spoiler.
We lose the king jack, so bit of a bummer that we lost the king jack, notice if we bet the flop. Two thousand, the opponent would have floated with over cards and back or flush draw, so it's not like you can make the opponent fold in that scenario, even then, you don't wanna think, oh, how do I make a hand that's drawing? Or how do I make an unpaired hand bold on the flop, right, you really don't mind if unpaired hands are in the pot in general. Uh if it did go check, check on the flop, I would have bet the turn with the jack high if we missed on the turn, if we didn't improve. But um that's fine, you know, sometimes we lose a pot and notice here that if we did play the hand more aggressively, so we bet the turn, maybe the opponent raises or jams. And then we have to call it off and we're just out, if I bet the turn. And bet the river, the opponent would have raised the river, in which case I would have folded, we would have lost the same amount and not induced bluffs, so you always wanna ask. How do I minimize my losses against the better hand while also inducing bluffs, that is a very important concept when you have a marginal made hand, which is exactly what we have here, so. Play small pots with your small hands and you know, this is, this is a very good small hand, but even then, we still wanna be checking with some hands that can very easily check call and that's what we have here.
Damn it, I missed the perfect score by two points this time, and what sucks is is we got eight for. Um checking flop and he said he liked the small bet there, the one that he actually, which you went with, right? But um in game, he still checked and I still only got.
That happens all, that's happened so often. That that's what's funny, but uh yeah, the interesting hand and we have T-Dub saying, I think if we're taking a line that checks. Back twice with top pair, we have to be calling a higher percentage of turn river bets as opposed to a flop bet. Yeah, because we're, you know, um inducing bluffs. Um and our hand is almost too strong to fold and we have some equity going to the river. As well, and our opponents are gonna be forced to turn some hands into a bluff with no showdown on turn and river often enough, especially a laggy player. Yep.
See you later. Cool, um I got a request for a quiz. I don't know what it was, let me go back and look.
Last time we had a request, it was a. An Alex quiz and it was hard to tell.
Jerk, yeah, he said he whiffed this one. Uh let me go back and find it in the chat.
Yeah, the hand is played kept. With the intention of, yep, exactly.
I'm scrolling to look for it. Yeah, I'm gonna follow that, I'll see, let me know what that number was again, Cap.
Yeah, we'll find one. Four fifty four, somebody's getting down, getting down there.
Yeah, Cat's a premium member.
Oh, four fifty four, let's see.
Oh, that looks like it might be a cash, hang on.
Yeah, for me, it's cash.
Alright, cool, let me get to it, that's cool, cuz I've been messing with cash a little bit, been studying a lot of cash lately. Oh, we did this one already, Cap.
Yeah, we did that one last week.
Cuz I don't play any cash game yet, so this one's done. Um do a public coaching premium quiz, I'm not sure which ones are on the free and which ones are not, to be honest with you. Um so if you could let me know, I would remember, I would do that.
Alright, let's mix up coaches, we we did two Jonathan, so let's find either a Matt or an Alex one. Or even a uh Matt Jarvis.
Uh King Deuce says streamers great, you guys are awesome, thanks, buddy, uh thanks for tuning in, man, make sure you tune in, we do this every Saturday and if you miss them, they're on the YouTube channel with the replay. So uh thank you for coming, man, thank you for being interactive, thank you. For all of that.
What's up, Co Bizzle?
Take the new GPT quiz, no, 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 have to sign up for that one.
Yeah, you're gonna have to sign up to do ours, you gotta check them out, they're free to sign up, do our quiz, if you're here today, check us out. Alright, now let's find one here, let's see what else we got. Thirty-three big blinds, pocket nines, five eighty-two, late jack, uh low jack multi-way with thirty-three bigs. Looks already kind of interesting.
Sure, the Matt Affleck one, five eighty-two?
Yep.
Done.
Let's do it.
Alright, today we have a hand from the Venetian sixteen hundred dollar main event that I recently played. In this hand, we have nine, nine in the low jack with twenty-six thousand, about thirty-three big blinds. Under the gun is going to open to two thousand. And it's gonna fold to us, um from what I remember, this player was slightly on the tighter side, although we didn't have a lot of reads. We have nines in middle position here, should we fold? Call? Re-raise to six thousand or go all in?
This is actually a really close spot, King.
Alright.
This is actually a really close spot.
I know, already it's just, he said the guy's kinda tight, we have thirty-three. Um I haven't thought about this, but I wanna see, let's give chat a chance to get out there and say what's up and give their input.
Yeah, for me, there's only two options and they're really close.
T-Dub says goddamn, I hate these spots, I know, dude, these are some of just the hellacious situations like. Strong hand, but it's, you know, kinda marginal when we get all the money in versus this and he does call. We just feel terrible a lot, under the gun tight, flat seems okay versus Co Bizzle. Yeah, I mean.
I gotta call every time for thirty-three bigs. Close, King disagrees, it's not close, we're calling sixes plus. Uh calling with him being tight and raising of the gun, how did the action go, this is the open and now we have to figure out what the, how we're gonna do, Cap, we're just facing a raise here. What are you doing, sixes?
Well, man, got a couple of schools of thought here, uh we still have a lot of players behind, jamming under the gun for thirty feels. Kind of close and marginal with thirty-three, I think if we have twenty-five, it's a no-brainer. Um we're not necessarily set mining with nines, there will certainly be boards that are good enough to continue on, um. Holy shit, I uh I know you don't, I wanna call.
Maybe call versus a tight under the gun profitable jam, I think, I a hundred percent agree, for me, it's between call and go all in for sure. Everything else is not an option, I think here I'd be calling against under the gun tight, I think that's the difference, but it is a thousand percent a profitable game.
Yeah, he hasn't said anything about the players behind, could jam, um. Thirty-three big blinds, kind of still a lot of playability, we can call here and then, you know, not run into it behind or not run into the tight under the gun. Call range and if he's kinda tight, he may play straightforward on some boards that are good runouts for us. Uh we avoid stupid coolers from players behind in this and we still have thirty big lines, so I'm gonna, I'm leaning towards calling.
Me too, um show says this spot's either flat or fold, are we getting set mining odds, so I think folding is out of the option, it's just too strong. Um set mining odds specifically would be thirty K. Um so we're not getting set mining odds, but as sixes said earlier, nines is a good hand, like we're not solely set mining, there's a lot of good flops for us. And if hands with like one over, we're never getting, we're never leaving the flop with with just like king four, six or something, you know what I mean? So yeah, now I'm getting a shitload of calls. Uh King Deuce says set mining odds is fifteen X.
Yeah, what do you guys think here in my chat, we got a.
So the connectors.
I feel awful when we rip and get snapped, yes, someone says raise two point one to two point five X. Yeah, the problem with that is just, are we turning our hand into a bluff, are we, are you just confident when we three bet and get four bet jammed, how do we feel about it, like? Does he ever four bet jam sevens, you know, or eights or something like that, so and then we're just folding nines as well at that point, just feels terrible.
Everybody, everybody calling.
Depends on how good your post-flop game is, it's gonna be pretty good when I have nines in position, um.
And like I said, jamming is definitely profitable, and honestly, I think it's a slightly valid argument, if you are a. If you are less comfortable post-flop and you jam this, I actually think there's some merit to that. Honestly, Matt Affleck doesn't fall into that category. And I feel uncomfortable post and you feel super comfortable.
Yeah.
If it's a lag player, are you more likely to jam?
I think still some of the same rules apply, um.
I think I would jam.
No, I I I I don't, I don't, I don't think so, I I don't know, I mean, I don't mind flattening here, um and playing, you know, I I don't mind playing this post-flapping position. Um and keeping in some of the worst hands. And uh not coloring ourselves, maybe, yeah, I I'm just not jamming thirty-three big blinds right here a lot.
To a last, is there more merit to if you're showing a pretty tight range to jamming, I would say yes, kinda, but then. People aren't paying enough attention to that shit. Curly, what's up, man, good to see you. Less than thirty days, full crap like sixes, uh sure, although maybe not against an under the gun raise, but versus a later position raise, high jack. Low jack, you can jam up to thirty bigs with any pair probably. Hundred percent.
Yeah, we, yeah, we were literally just going through a bunch of spots like that, yeah.
Um so we're all calling, ready?
Yeah, let's just go with call, guys, and uh learn from, you know, what do you think about this spot? So let's do it.
Here with nines, I think there's only two options to consider, calling and go going all in and I think calling is definitely the superior option against the under the gun open. Um I think nines are just a little bit too weak where we don't really get called by eights if we shove. And uh we do fold out some hands like ace, queen off suit, ace, jack, you know, king, queen suited, like we fold out some. Some of those hands that are really good, but the problem with shoving too is we still have five players behind us and, you know. Five players could pick up, you know, pocket jacks or better ace, king, you know. A certain percentage of the time, that's what, top four percent of hands, let's say, so. You know, there's one, two, three, four, five, I I can't do the math on top of my head, but it's probably about, you know, at least ten percent of the time. Maybe even more that we get called behind us, so I think calling is clearly the best option, I would never re-raise to six thousand here with this hand, it just doesn't play well post-flop. If we're gonna shove, we wanna deny equity the most we can. Also, we don't have a lot of hands we wanna be shoving, so if we shove here, we're kinda just turning our hand face up into like pocket nines or pocket tens or pocket jacks. We do call. And the big blind comes along. Flop comes ace, eight, seven, three rainbow. And the under the gun player bets thirty-eight hundred, should we fold? Call? Raise to ten thousand? Or go all in?
What do you guys think, fold, call, raise to ten K or jam it in his eye?
Alright.
What y'all got out there?
Yeah, my dude Mike, my dude's mic sounds crazy.
Matt's?
Yeah, it's for me, it's uh yeah, it's, it sounds crazy as hell to me, maybe I have it too loud, I have to cut down my.
Oh, maybe it's too loud cuz mine sounds great, I think.
Alright, we're good, sorry, guys, if the sound was shit. I know what I'm doing here, but uh let's see what everyone thinks.
PC dot com member, just here to have my mind blown. Uh I see a call, I see a jam, I see Matt will probably raise, but King Deuce likes to call.
I think my problem with flattening these spots is that I don't like going against under the gun range since they can apply a lot of pressure on decent amount of textures. Yeah, but at the same time, they are just gonna have some bet folds, uh we're just gonna have the best hand a lot. When we do call here, freezes up their range enough in some cases, so. Uh T-Dub says he's calling here, yes, this guy is a tight player, betting multi-way here.
Bunch of callers, bunch of callers, bunch of callers, Cap says villain still has over pairs and sets, I think he nailed it, homie. Like, we're raising here for value or as a bluff, we're raising for value, what's worse, that's calling, doesn't have a lot of eight X and seven X in his hand because he's raising under the gun. Which means we're betting as a bluff and this hand's too good to bet as a bluff, so I think calling is the only option.
Yep. I wanted to see what more people, yeah, I think you call or jam, but calling seems better, you know, when we jam here, like what are we trying, I I know. Some people, I think, maybe inexperienced players here in this spot can get confused and scared because we jam here, you know, it's. Less likely that he's gonna turn an ace or a king if he has ace, king or ace, queen or ace, jack or something like that, we don't get sucked out on. And this is as good as it gets, but at the same time, when we jam here, what worse hand is gonna call us? Uh you know, and then and then we just get better to call or worse to fold. And he just has no loss at that point, we don't give him a chance to keep bluffing or anything. Um yeah, so just think about that, you know, you get better to call and worse to fold, it's not a good thing.
Yep. Great, everyone's saying call, Ginger's jamming, she's not scared, she doesn't wanna.
She just, yeah, she just wants the money and the.
And the hand, move on, next spot.
And then, yep, yep, this is as good as it gets, I know players think like that, but we just get better to call and worse to fold.
Agree, like we literally only beat an eight or a seven X hand and he shouldn't have too many of those.
Yeah, and I mean, sixes and fives are always, the 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 bluffs and the worst hands are folding the ace tens and things like that, yes, they have equity against you. But when you jam, he just snaps you off with kings, queens, aces, like no problem. And a guy in a big blind could just wake up and have seven, eight of hearts or something like that, or threes, you know?
Or jacks.
Yeah, like who knows, yeah, just big hands, still, we just, so I think it's just a pure call. So let's run it and see what Matt thinks.
Agreed.
Again, I think we have two clear options here, either calling or going all in, and I think it's very similar to pre-flop. Uh the under the gun player is betting quite large share, just over half pot into two, into three players, so. He's representing a pretty strong hand and I just don't think our hand is strong enough to be shoving here, I think calling is the best option. I can get behind going all in, um I think calling is superior, um but going all in, we knock out the big blind. And also we get the under the gun player to like, we can pull out some hands like jack ten or queen, jack or ace, king, so there are benefits going all in. There's benefits to calling too cuz we could call and then the big blind shoves with say ace, eight or re-raises and we can get the money in better. So I think calling is the best option here, just keep in mind, we're still against another gun racer, so they have a pretty, you know, wide, tight range. So I think calling is the best option here. Just keep in mind, we're still against another gun racer. So they have a pretty, you know, wide, tight range. We do call. Big blind calls also. The turn is the Queen of Spades. Does check, checks to us. Should we check? Bet five thousand or go all in?
What y'all doing? Jack says cap.
Right.
Interesting spot.
Very interesting, isn't it? Isn't this interesting?
I mean, I have a famous saying for spots like this.
What's that?
I don't want to say it yet.
Alright, yeah, let's see what, let's see what people wanna do in this spot. What do you guys think? So
Check from Wisco.
My cat is kind of shook right now. Nobody's really said much, so we got eh, okay, it's three ways, damn. What do we think about under the gun sizing? Uh, yeah, I think the sizing is just fine. He's just still gonna use that with some hands that we beat. Um, somebody says they like a smallish bet. What are you trying to accomplish with the smallest bet, Cobizzle? Yeah, you deny equity, but you know what else? A small bet, kind of, I, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate. I'm just thinking through the smart, a small bet here when we get raised. We have just very easy decisions for the rest of the hand. You know, likely when they call, they don't lead into us anymore. We get to just showdown for five K. You know, I, I think it's very interesting. Ah, that's kind of interesting. I'm not, I'm kind of running it through my head here. Betting small. You know, uh, if we do get called, we have very easy checks going into the river. Uh, we can just check back and get showdown that way. Uh, because when we check here and one of these players bets anything, it really is going to suck for us.
Uh, we snap call, right?
Do we? I mean, if they bet twelve K, aren't we gonna leave ourselves eight K behind like in ten bays? Like if somebody bets, if, if the big blind bets twelve K and they're both players here.
Well, what depending on the river call, right?
It depends a lot.
We have a snap call because it went check flop, check turn.
Yeah, because you can have hands like ace, eight, king, eight, but why would he turn those hands into a bluff?
I think he's probably betting for that.
Do you think like under the gun? Sometimes has like tens and jacks and things like that to just check back now?
So my saying is Lord help me if they check the turn. So I still feel that way. I was gonna jam it. Now I'm conflicted with the five K because we do have the best hand or a lot. I'm not scared of under the gun because now he's only got jacks and tens because he never checks a queen. He never checks kings. He never checks aces. He never checks sets of queens. So I don't think he checks sets of eights and sets of sevens either. And so now he's only got jacks and tens that beat us. Um, if we jam, we get the forty-four thousand to fold a lot, which is not good. There's a set pot ratio of about one. I'm really conflicted between five K. If I bet five K, I have twenty bays behind. And we can check back rivers.
Yeah, let's see where my chat. We got a lot of stuff going on now. Uh, small bet for free showdown. Big blind has weaker pairs. You turn your hand into a bluff by batting. By Dr. HJ, if we check, river gets tricky. It does. We charge draws and value. Um, rivers, less, less stressful when we bet. Man, people are like, really liking the bet option. Um, and he's playing it like Jackson ten, someone else said. Correct analysis by God's big toe, obviously. John, JM Badger, thank you for that follow, buddy. What's up, man? Good afternoon. Interesting.
I got a couple of five Ks in there and then Uh, he could have jacks or tens, but if we face a raise or a river bet, it's miserable. I like denying equity with a small bet on the turn. I could definitely get behind the five K. I think in game I just jam and hear a lot move on. Add his dad, thank you for the follow.
Hey, Sean with the sub eighteen months, my goodness. Eighteen months, part of the family. I appreciate you, buddy. Thank you for that sub. Yeah, man, this is a tough spot to be honest with you. Going all in, um. Seems kind of interesting. SPR of almost a little over one. Alright, I'm gonna have to pick somebody. I'm picking somebody. This is me picking somebody in chat. Sean four one five, what are you doing in this spot if you're out there, my dude? Sean's checking, we're checking.
I don't wanna pick cap because cap is going to
I like it, Sean, let's do it.
Uh, wait a second. Uh, Jim Lab, what are you doing? Uh, you came in late.
Ginger, what are you doing? Ginger jamming.
What are you doing, John?
Think what is the frequency we check, get, check raise when we bet one third?
Do you think a jam here?
And the turn bet sets us up to merge as well.
I don't know that jacks and tens fold. It's pretty hard for them to fold here.
Not for five K?
No, if we jam. Pretty hard to fold.
Yeah, we polarize our range.
What's your, what's your check I say you guys were gonna do?
Uh, we're checking, yeah. Alright, ooh, this is be cool. Alright, we're gonna check, Sean. Let's do it. You guys ready?
This is kind of a tricky spot here with just over a pot size bet left, multi-way. Going all in is not very good here in theory, I believe, because all worse hands are just going to fold. And all better hands are going to call. I don't think our queen ever folds if we shove here. Uh, we could maybe fold out some like naked flush draws, like king, ten of spades and stuff would have to fold if we shove. So there are some benefits, but that's a very narrow range of hands. Um, however, we are three ways here and our hand needs a lot of protection. So I actually like betting five thousand the best here. And doing that just to kind of get us a cheap showdown. This is what I would do if we had pocket eights and pocket sevens, which we could play the same way. If we had play ace, queen, if we floated the flop with ace, queen of diamonds or ace, queen of clubs with the backdoor flush draw, I think betting five thousand would be the best option. We don't need to bet large because there's only one pot size bet left. So I really like betting five thousand. Um, checking is definitely a viable option as well. But I think our hand just needs way too much protection and I like betting and then checking back the river the most. We bet five thousand and both players full and we win the pot.
Nailed it. Wait! We got our first perfect score.
Well played, sir. Well played.
Show fifty, team toe member, my man.
Good job, show. Good call.
Think I err on the side of big bet too much. I mean, I know I did. We talked about this a lot. I'm a big and this is a spot where I would have made that same mistake. I love the five K bet and I don't know that I would do that naturally in game. I really gotta put more of that out there. I love it.
Yeah, we kind of went over. I kind of thought, you know, um, initially like we wanna use a small bet here, but yeah, it makes sense. I really, I really like, it makes a lot of sense.
What was that? Eight points, seven points, something like that?
Uh, it was seven points. So he said checking was viable. Yep, yeah, it doesn't mean we're like we're wrong. I'm having fun today. You wanna do another one? You got time?
I love doing this shit. I got, I got no life, man. This is all I do. I'm making a YouTube video on shit from the last stream. We're doing a what would you do? Uh, so yeah, this is all I ever do, man.
Let's see, let's, let's find another one. I'll pick that one. You wanna pick one?
You know what? Evan Jarvis doesn't play any tournaments. It's like, kind of just wanna
I know, I'm on the tournament. Yeah, we got a lot of tournament. Ocean's eleven, one mil. Good luck, my dude.
Someone's playing Ocean's eleven, one mil?
Yeah, day one at Ocean's eleven for one million dollar. He already bagged last night. He's out there doing work. Everybody, good luck to do my dude Cobizzle out there playing for the big bucks, trying to represent the Twitch community. Do it, big man.
Uh, we're about five twenty-six. It's Evan Jarvis and the Run It Up Reno Main Event.
Ooh, uh, you found, you might found some gold. Running up Reno Main Events. Yeah, let's look at this. Let's do it.
Let's do it. We don't take enough.
I know, yeah, we gotta check out Evan a little bit more. I like his game.
I was watching the stream. He was actually on Twitch the other day. It was fun.
Yeah, I watched it for a few minutes as well. Yeah, he's, he's solid as hell.
Cool, let's play the video.
Let's do it.
Hey, everyone, this is Evan for pokercoaching.com. Today I am going to be reviewing a hand that I played in the Run It Up Reno Main Event. So you're in the small blind with Jack ten of hearts. Zach, a good regular, opens to three hundred chips. Uh, blinds are one hundred, one hundred with a one hundred ante. And it folds to you in the small blind. Two hundred and fifty big blinds deep. What do you do? Do you fold? Call? Raise to nine hundred or raise to fifteen hundred?
What are you guys doing? Get him out there.
Alright.
Um, I'm not gonna answer. This is standard. I have a standard move in this situation, so. That's Zach good reg. I wonder if that's uh, Thras.
Uh, Zach who?
Uh, Thras three seventy.
Oh, it could be, right? Yeah, it's Run It Up Reno. He whipped on something like this, yeah.
I don't know if it's him or not. Took twenty-seventh in the main event this year. My man, he's a neighbor of mine. Uh, Cap says like twenty-five hundred, uh, fifteen hundred one time.
So yeah, here's our options. Call nine hundred or fifteen hundred. Uh, Dr. HJ says three bet. Cabra says call. Uh, in game, I would probably fat, but obviously should three bet. Hmm, three bet that deep.
Twirl swing says I like a flat here. Not sure if that's the right GBT answer. I should remember though. I'm playing the venom step one through six right now, sitting six. Oh, hey, good job, one. That's good luck, buddy. We're flat being out of position, Curly says. I will get to that when I, when I say what I say.
Yep, so we got a lot. We got more three bets than calls. Yeah, it's kind of surprising. Very interested in his hand though. Yeah, it's interesting when we're playing this deep effective. Um, this deep, I'd probably flat, Sean would say. So yeah, um, you wanna go first?
Ah, my god, I have Justin in my goddamn head.
But this is two hundred and fifty.
Normally, I would a thousand percent be flat in here. Hey, what's up, James? Good to see you, buddy. I would a thousand. Thank you for the follow. I would a thousand be percent be flat. However, I've been studying a lot of cash games lately. We're two hundred and fifty bays deep. And Evan Jarvis is a good tournament player, but an excellent cash game player. And Justin says when we're this deep, we should be three betting our suited shit and folding our offsuit shit. Which is kind of backwards from what I normally
It's like a stronger, it's, it's more part of our strong linear, you know, range and this kind of falls in that category. Um, but in regards to the sizings here. Four point five X, you know, is, you know, fifteen hundred or something like that. And what's up, I got dibs. Good afternoon, man. He says if the big blind is a fish flat, if the big blind is good, three bet. He didn't make any assumptions on the big blinds game. It looked like it's very early, like level one in this tournament where he doesn't recognize anybody. So I don't think he's worried about this guy possibly three betting him or anything.
And the truth is, is like, well, that is definitely important and valid information to keep in your mind when you're playing. Ninety-nine percent of the time we're playing against strangers. That we just don't know. So we go more GTO. Um, I think I would go fifteen hundred based on the shit I've been working on lately, but
Yeah, we've been playing a lot. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I tend to uh, flat this spot a little bit, but uh, you know, working on a cash game and looking at the shapes of our ranges when we're this deep a little bit. And what hands we wanna kind of use as three bets. Um, I certainly wouldn't hate using this. It's gonna have perfect coverage, um, as well. And he's still opening, you know, uh, from the hijack, so it's opening range is gonna be opening, you know, maybe thirty-ish percent of hands from this spot, so.
Yeah, a couple of my things say they would actually go something like twelve hundred. I think I would agree, but uh, fifteen hundred is the next closest option. Nine hundred, too small out of position.
Alright, so uh, dibs, I'm choo, I, I choose you this year. So you're gonna flat this spot, buddy? Or are you gonna three bet? We're gonna do it early in the hand, pick somebody from the crowd early.
I have overwhelmingly fifteen hundred, so we're just gonna go with that.
You're gonna go fifteen hundred dibs or are you gonna flat? I'll wait for my man here like another few seconds and then I'm just gonna pick one. To run it up, yeah, it has, this has to be like level one in this thing as well, like, which is kind of cool. Everybody has like the equal stack. One hundred, one hundred blind. Alright, let's do it.
Cool.
Alright, let's do it.
And a hand that I definitely wanna be seeing a flop with early stage in the tournament. Calling is a nice option. We keep the pot stack ratio very deep. And give lots of room to play post-flop. The only downside to calling is the fact that we'll be out of position with a deep pot to stack ratio. Thereby giving Zach a bigger advantage after the flop. Raising to nine hundred, while giving us the lead in the hand. Builds the pot, but not so much that we're gonna have a very shallow pot stack ratio. So for that reason, I like option D of raising to fifteen hundred, which both gives us the lead in the hand. Uncaps our range, so we can still have the best hands like aces, kings, queens, ace, king. And it builds the pot for the times that we either move our opponent off his hand after the flop. Or end up making a really strong hand, which is very often gonna happen with a hand as strong as Jack ten suited. So we make it fifteen hundred. Zach calls our three bet. And we see a flop of ace of spades, nine of spades, seven of hearts. Action is on you. What should you do? Should you check? Bet eighteen hundred, bet thirty-six hundred or bet seventy-two hundred?
Cap says hate flooding out of the small blind. Show saying he's three of these sets of hands all the time. Problem is we get pushed off and don't get to realize the equity. Um, if we elected to three bet gear, will be folded with four bet? Yes. Hey, what's up, Marlin? No problem, buddy. Good to see you. Um, the difference is the stack sizes. Um, so hang on, I mute sixes. Uh, so yeah, I was talking about a couple of things here. Um, the difference in stack sizes, I think if we're like in the forty, fifty blinds deep area, we flat this. Cuz we really wanna realize our equity. When we're two hundred plus bays deep, that's when we start three betting with seven folding before bets.
This is interesting, like, why seventy, bet seventy-two hundred? Yeah, let's do it. Seventy-two. No, I don't think we're ever doing that, just, yeah, um. Let's see what we got. We got bet eighteen hundred, bet eighteen hundred. Think you have to bet? Yes, uh, I'm agreeing. I agree. I agree. So, yeah, um, what size do you get in your chat? I got a bunch of eighteen hundreds around these parts.
See those bet sizes. I see eighteen hundred ready to barrel a bunch of turns for King Deuce. I see eighteen hundred from Wisco, plenty of barrel cards on the turn. Uh, generally with three bets smaller because the open is generally small too, except we gotta go bigger than we normally would cuz we're out of position, yeah. That's the big thing there. Eighteen hundred seems best.
Yeah, so you got a bunch of eighteen hundreds as well.
I'm down.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we need to be c-betting here. We're gonna make some hands that might call this from a good break. He's gonna realize he's just gonna call with under pairs and king, queens. You know, um, all kind of different hands. We can just make fold. We got decent equity as well. We got backdoor hearts. So eighteen hundred is the one. You're blocking his ace flat, so ace, jack, ace, ten. Um, he probably might four bet sometime with ace, king, although he might flat that as well in position. But either way, yeah, I really like a bet here.
Um, yeah, me too. Um, Cap was talking about the smaller stacks. I was saying, yeah, the problem with those stack sizes. We can't really three bet those. We don't wanna get pushed off those as much because we really wanna find flush draws and check jam them. We're on a thirty, forty bays, you know, twenty big somewhere in that range. Um, and we really wanna be able to do that. Um, and we don't have enough fucking round chips. In that case, in this case, we got plenty of fucking round chips.
Let's do it, eighteen.
This is a reasonably good flop for our hand. Not only have we flopped a gutshot straight draw where the eight can make us the nuts. We also have a backdoor flush draw. We can go run a run. We also have a backdoor flush draw. We can go run around our hearts to probably make the best hand. But most importantly, the board is ace high, which given that we three bet pre-flop, means that we can have an ace in our range. For these reasons, I definitely don't like checking on this board. We don't have a hand that we're looking to check and call a bet with. Jack ten suited is a bit too weak for that. And at the same time, our hand is not strong enough to be check raising. So for that reason, I like leaning towards a bet here. And I think it's really between betting eighteen hundred or betting thirty-six hundred. When we bet eighteen hundred in this spot, we can expect our opponent to probably fold his Broadway hands that didn't connect with this board. Which happened to have us beat at this point in the hand. And we can also expect him to fold pocket pairs, under pairs to the board, and we can move him off his, uh, share of the pot with our jack high. Betting thirty-six hundred may get him to fold something like middle pair or third pair on this board. Although I don't know if that's the case, and I think we can probably accomplish the same thing by firing multiple barrels. And doing the big overbet of over two times the pot with seventy-two hundred, definitely will get him to fold out those middle pairs. But we can probably do that without risking as much by going with, uh, smaller bet size and doing it multiple times. So for that reason, I like the eighteen hundred chip bet. And which our opponent calls. The turn is the five of hearts. Giving us that backdoor flush draw. And action is on you. Do you check? Bet sixteen hundred, bet thirty-two hundred, or bet sixty-four hundred?
Interesting, interesting.
Interesting. Alright.
I'm conflicted because my bet size would be between two of these options.
I know what you mean, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I guess get some thirty-two hundreds rolling into the.
You're going forty-eight, aren't you?
What's up, buddy? Good to see you.
You're going forty-eight?
Sure, this is Evan Jarvis.
Yeah, this is Evan Jarvis, beast.
Hey, shout out to Just GTO too for the beginning of this quiz, teaching this old dog some new tricks, man. Feels good.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I know I'm there. I think.
I've been fighting there a hundred percent three weeks ago. I've been studying so much cash.
Yeah, we've been working on the cash game.
Super big stacks are much different. Sixty-seven percent all day, says Dude Arena. What is sixty-seven percent? I ain't attacking that shit.
Uh, so we're attacking as small pairs and king and queen highs on small, smaller sizings. Uh, bet sixty-four hundred, bet sixty-four hundred only. Ace can call sixty-four hundred or set. I'm getting a lot of sixty-four hundreds, sets up river jams. And he's folding out a lot of better hands, plus then lying a lot of equity his flooding range would have. Sixty-four hundred being able to jam river.
Woo, Kep say, think we do that small again, a small sixteen hundred or thirty-two hundred. I got mostly thirty-two hundreds. Marlin likes fifty-one fifty here.
Damn, you got mostly thirty-twos. Everybody is overwhelming sixty-four in my chat.
Um, and then folding.
If, if they come over the top, I mean, yeah, that hasn't even been addressed. We're just talking about setting up a river jam once we get there because.
What happens if you get raised?
We're believers in this chat. We don't believe in getting raised. We just believe in betting big as hell. And we believe in banging off the eight on the river and jamming and getting max value. That's how we do around these parts. Ain't nobody thinking about going no thirty-two hundred, no stinking, nah.
That's where our chat's different. Your chat's not gonna know, don't fear the reaper. My chat's gonna.
No, honestly, for me, I, I don't, I think, I don't think I'm going sixty-four hundred here.
Joe says, it says it's a very strong move to keep betting lead. If we go half pot and get raised, I think we could call. The bigger bet only gets us called by better and raised by better. Uh, we bet big and get raised. We have to fold. It gets definitely awkward.
I don't feel like I can go against my chat here. I don't know. Like, I feel like a different way, but my chat is just like so.
Thirty-two hundred. Thirty-two hundred definitely prefer around four point five. I agree. This four point five K is sixty-seven percent. I think Dude Arena nailed it. I think I'm about forty-five hundred myself.
Dude, I swear, no, I'm dead serious. Like, we all work. I feel like I'm going like sixty-ish percent.
Yeah, because we all, me, Dude Arena, Crazy Sixes, I Hots Man, um, all Ju- Just GTO. That's our study group. We all study together a lot, multiple times a week. So that's our like little private group of warriors. And so like, we're all gonna have the same bet sizes.
I mean, there's certain, yeah, we'll differ in.
We have different opening ranges, but we got the same bet sizes in the same spot.
Just about, yeah. But I'm gonna have to go with sixty-four hundred, because my chat is just, this is one, uh, once a hand, every single hand that we do. I'm going to eventually go with, I, my chat or one particular person in chat. So this is the one, boys. I believe in you. Let's do sixty-four.
Someone says, the reaper and him are very close friends, but not by choice.
Sixty-four hundred for semi bluff, and when you get there, it's max value. When you know you're getting there, we can disregard net sizing completely.
Thirty-two hundred, that leaves like eighteen K out there. Yeah, but if we bet thirty-two hundred to get called, eh, it gets us a one and a half pot jam. But then again, I guess, am I triple barreling this? Without a heart, uh, or an eight, obviously. Uh, jack and a ten. Probably check backs for showdown value. I am never getting an ace to fold.
We can dent his range completely, haunt, uh, a lot of every strong hand when he goes sixty-four.
Draws to fold. I don't think I'm tripling this very much.
Honestly, I, I would be thinking under the guise of we're betting enough to make some of the weakest ace X suited like ace four, ace three, ace deuce, ace eight.
What's the buy-in for Run It Up Reno?
Um, I don't know. It's not, maybe eleven hundred.
Yeah, so for that reason, I think these players are gonna be not as good as like the bigger buy-in tournaments. Um.
Flooding range tip this in a vacuum, ace five suited, kinda just.
So since I don't think there's gonna have the highest, I mean, I know this is a good reg, so he's the exception to the rule. But I think most people aren't folding an ace here.
No.
And we're gonna have to triple barrel to get an ace to fold, because especially with the flush draw, the, the spades out there makes it less likely an ace is gonna fold, cause it makes it more likely that we have spades.
My gut says thirty-two. Uh, everything in my body says thirty-two, but the chat says sixty-four and they have spoken, but my, my, my body is saying thirty-two, but.
Honestly, too, like, if it does come with a heart on the river and we jam pot in half. I guess it still kinda looks like the missed flush draw.
Yeah, we're in the small blind and we three bet from the small blind tee-dubs.
Um, I'm on thirty-two. My whole chat is on thirty-two. That's good.
Alright, y'all going thirty-two. We're going sixty-four, boys. We live and die together. Let's go.
Once our opponent calls on this flop, we definitely have to give him credit for having some kind of hand. He's probably not gonna be floating our continuation bet with nothing but high cards and nothing but an overpair. So we can assume that our opponent probably has either a pair of aces, a flush draw. Or, um, you know, a pair of nines or a pair of sevens. Now, when we think about what nines and sevens he's gonna play, probably going to have nine, eight suited, nine, ten suited, seven, eight suited, seven, six suited. So those hands have improved to a pair and a straight draw on this turn. Which means they'll probably call a reasonable sized bet on the turn, but probably not call a bet on the river. So for that reason, I like betting with the intention of betting multiple, you know, the turn and the river. Checking here doesn't make a lot of sense because we still just have jack high. But with how much we've improved our hand on the turn, being able to make the best hand with an eight, a heart, maybe even a jack or a ten, we have a little bit too much equity in the pot to simply give up on the hand. If we checked, I guess we could go for a check raise, but that seems like a very expensive way to potentially find out we're behind. Now, between the betting options, I think betting sixteen hundred will definitely not fold him off those middle pair hands. But it allows us to bet them off on the river for a cheaper price. Betting half pot or around thirty-two hundred will put us in the same situation, but it accomplishes two things. One is it gives us, um, it prices us in when we make our hand. So we're basically laying ourselves the right odds to make our hand on the river. And if we do happen to improve to a flush or to a straight, we can bet a more significant amount on the river. Than we could if we simply bet a quarter of the pot. So because we have the chance to improve to the best hand, I like going for a bigger bet size on this turn. Betting close to the full size of the pot. Probably in addition to allowing us to bet really big on the river, we'll be able to go all in on the river if we get called. Um, also may fold him off of those second and third pair type hands. So if the plan is simply to fire one more barrel at it and be done with it if we don't improve, I like the full pot sized bet. But if the plan is to triple barrel, be it improved or unimproved, I like going with the half pot sized bet. Um, and then choosing a specific sizing on the river based on whether or not we make our hand. So we bet thirty-two hundred and Zach, to our surprise, raises to eighty-five hundred. It's fifty-three hundred more to call into a pot of fifteen thousand three hundred. What should you do? Should you fold, call, or go all in?
Yuck. What are you guys doing?
Interesting.
Yuck, this raise is so infrequent.
Yeah, this is interesting as hell. So, um, I wish he would have elaborated on, like, I was listening to his explanation. I really liked it. So I wish he would have went into, so he said when he goes half pot here, um, he plans on turning his hand into a bluff more often than when he goes sixty-four hundred, which I, I, I get that. Kay, like, what, what card, what hands would he be continue betting on river?
Flush.
What? Yeah, I mean, but no, uh, unmade hands. So he says, why do we make our hand? Oh, so he's just gonna bet the spades? He's gonna continue betting spades as well?
Imagine. Kinda has to, I think.
We just give our opponent no credit for.
Get the ace to fold.
Yeah, damn, we're just gonna have to turn our hand into a bluff and a flush that's there.
Cause cringy as fuck. He said, going all in is just a really expensive way to find out that you're behind. I thought that was hysterical.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting. I wish he would have elaborated a little bit on, um, what cards he's gonna turn into a blubber, bluff more often when he uses this size, cause he says he's gonna keep betting. And then why, uh, on those specific cards? Cause I thought that would have been very interesting. So, um, here we're getting three to one, um, with the backdoor flush draw. A gut shot. Um, and yeah, so, oh, load. Somebody said Cobizzle. We're gonna call, Dr. HJ says. And if we're barreling thirty-two hundred, get the same range we're trying to get off. I would fold here. Wow, we're getting a couple of folds.
So I got a fold, a call, a fold, sixteen hundred is okay as long as I'm barreling too much, which I am on the river. Uh, Dude Arena says, don't understand why we opted for such a large bet size from the get-go. Uh, it was because we were out of position and we're super deep, man.
Yeah, we have to there, yeah.
Uh, sick, now we have to call the raise, don't we? We're in position. Two me outs. Yeah, we're not in position. Uh, we're out of position. But two me, that's the effect of that, so we're super deep. Uh, all in at the main event has a rebound squirrel. Hope it thinks it's got six in its face. This is why we don't three bet two thirds. Have to call, we're getting odds, either a fold or jam. What scenario? Yeah, so.
We can stack two pairs and flushes to my bet rivers. I, I just, yeah.
What are you doing here, sixes?
I'm calling.
Calling. Yeah, me too. I think if he bet a larger size, I would like to fold. I think this size is just not big enough.
Yeah, we're getting three to one. Our hand is very disguised when we get there. And at this point, when he makes this raise now, which is cool, I feel like when we hit a heart or if we hit an eight, uh, we get his entire stack more often now versus sets and two pairs.
Hope it says, could be better, better flush, um, and we get paid if I can. I say backdoor flush is really hard for them now. Especially when we have two hearts. So like, I do think we get paid and I think I'm not scared of a heart. I'd be way more scared of the spade.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I completely agree. So what do we have? So we have some cau- we have more calls than folds. I've seen two folds, couple of calls, somebody begging for the eight of diamonds. Um, but yeah, I think we're calling in this spot.
We do.
Alright, let's call, boys. Let's see it.
Given the fact that we have twelve outs to almost certainly make the best hand unless we happen to be up against, um, the ace X of hearts. Which would probably just call this turn anyway. And I would assume that king, queen of hearts would have folded to the flop bet. I guess king nine of hearts is possible, and that's one hand that may raise. Um, but other than that, which is, you know, like one combination.
Okay, that's a math call.
He has a made hand, like two pair.
That's funny.
Or the long shot, six, eight suited, which is made a straight. And against all those hands, we have very good implied odds. If we call for five thousand more, there's gonna be twenty thousand in the middle and less than a pot sized bet going into the river. And with that much money out there in the middle, it's gonna be pretty hard for our opponent to fold facing a bet on the later street. So for that reason, I prefer calling over folding. Um, we're getting the right pot odds immediately, not to mention the implied odds on top of it. Um, so continuing with at least a call seems definitely the best thing to do. Going all in only serves the purpose of trying to fold him off of um, a king nine suited or a nine, eight suited that he happens to be turning into a bluff here. But I just, I don't think he's that likely to be doing that on the first level of the tournament. In a spot where we're showing a lot of strength, we three bet out of the big, the small blind, bet the flop and the turn. We probably have a strong hand. This is about one of the weakest hands we're gonna have. And therefore, I don't think he's raising with a hand that he's planning on folding with. So for those reasons, I think that call is definitely the best play in this spot. So we call. The river is the jack of diamonds, not making us our straight or flush, but it does make us a pair. And there is twenty-four thousand in the middle, thirteen thousand behind. We check. Zach goes all in. Action is on you. What should you do? Should you fold, or should you call?
This hurts. Yeah, so, uh, we got a sidefold, stupid.
I got a couple of folds on my chat already too.
Yeah, he had seven.
Yeah, hopefully, it's not about the winner here, though. Like I said, it's about the math. We were getting the right immediate odds and implied odds to call. Then you call, like, does.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Tell there's two it. Jack's like, we hit and it's the worst thing ever.
Yeah, it feels so terrible. You hate to see it. I mean, but you know what the good news is, guys? When this happens to you in game, you don't get frustrated and feel like what you had. You look down at your stack, you see it's one hundred, one hundred and say, hey, I have a hundred and thirty-two big blinds. Right now, after I fold this. That's a massive stack, even relative to what other, other stacks have. It doesn't matter. You have a hundred and thirty-two big blinds. Um, I don't fold against good regs and it, it's a principle thing. You mean the ego thing? Yeah, um.
Do you find that when you play against players who know you? I feel like when I play against players that know me, it's always one of two categories. It's generally players who respect my game and don't wanna mess with me and are super nitty and only come after me with the nuts. And then it's the opposite player who just wants to beat the toe so they could say neener, neener.
No, I was repeating something from chat. Yeah, like, that was my dude saying, I don't fold against good regs is the principle.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was bringing about. That's funny. Uh, everyone's saying fold. I agree, it's fold.
Alright, cool. I'll be ready.
Uh, is that pocket fives?
Yeah, that's little fives. Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, in this spot, I, I don't think it's, I, I just think, uh, he's just going to show you the best hand too often here.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a confidence thing. Crazy sixes, that is important concept. You realize, do you still have a hundred and thirty-two big blind? Yeah, just look at it like that. Massive stack, dude. We, you've come, you've come back from these stacks, like, it's so deep.
In the orange zone or the yellow, like, we are so far.
Yeah, we are so far ahead. Yeah, who cares what everybody else has? We have a hundred big blind stacks. So move on, fold the hand, and live to fight another day.
Yep, click it in.
Given our assessment of the situation earlier, again, I think it's very unlikely that our opponent has a hand that he's bluffing with here. They're just, I guess, like six, five of spades, jack, ten of spades, but we block that. It's just pretty unlikely that our opponent has a hand that he's bluffing with. We've shown a lot of strength in this hand. He's shown a lot of strength in his hand, and therefore I think it's most likely that our opponent has a made hand better than a pair of jacks. I think if he had a hand like nine, eight, seven, eight, seven, six, after we called it. I think if he had a hand like nine, eight, seven, eight, seven, six, after we called the turn, he's probably gonna give up with that hand, and therefore even though we reverted a pair of jacks, I don't think our hand is good at all. We fold and our opponent shows ace nine offsuit, which I was a little bit surprised that he called the three bet pre-flop. But this is a six hundred dollar entry tournament with re-entry. He'd already doubled up on the second hand of the tournament and in situations like that, people tend to feel confident willing to gamble. So I'm not super surprised actually that he peeled with this hand uh given the scenario. So make the good folds and definitely see that we did have the implied odds if we had hit our eight or our heart on the river.
But I'll be seeing you pop on, hell yeah, man, go luck out there on the streets.
Did we debate? Did you get a perfect score?
No, we did. I gave, I went with the chat with the sixty four. Once a year, we go, see, my chat has just killed me lately, guys, I need you to step up next week. You know what, chat, I'm gonna give you a week to use these free quizzes, get out there, work in your game, and then we're gonna come back next week and crush toe.
I was saying to tell army like, pretty strong, pretty strong, even a couple times where I threw it out to them, like, uh John for the win, two perfects today, that's crazy.
Sabotaging you, now people will think you're bad. Yeah, that's what I need, I need that. Yeah, I need people to think I'm worse than I am. Um I wish I had time, do I have time for one more? Am I gonna get in trouble if I do one more? I'm DJing, this is us DJing, I'm having fun today, man.
This is a good problem now.
DJ study stream, alright, last one, we'll be quick, guys. Yeah, I'll pick it, it's the last one. We haven't done an Alex one today. Let me see, one oh nine fifteen K, five eighty. Hey, what's up, Deepoke? How you doing, man? Sounds like you're going to get in trouble. I'm getting in big trouble for this. I gotta leave, I gotta send a contract out, you gotta make a phone call. Alright.
Play it, let's go, hurry up.
Let's do it.
I know the volume is super, super low, his shit sucks. Thank you for the rate save, I appreciate you, buddy.
Regs in this hand history.
God, the volume on this was so low.
It was so low.
God, um Cat likes the king of export, that's right, here we go. Uh this is a premium one too, cool, cool, cool. Um what are you guys doing? I don't see any answers out there, let me know what you're doing out there. I see a call from Cat.
So we got a call, yeah. It's okay, I'm always in trouble. Hopefully the sound was good for you guys. Um we'll rehash it, he says he has a average reg here, he considers Mogi water, I play with Mogi water a lot, he plays a lot on different sites.
Born below EV is a reg too.
Yeah, below, born below EV, I recognize, small blind, I recognize, so yeah, we play with these guys. The volume was really bad, I'm sorry, guys, I'll work on turning it up a little bit.
It was crazy low.
It's super low, I I really apologize. It's just this video specifically that's doing that. But yeah, um what are you guys doing here? I think it's just gonna be, for me, I'm just calling this, I don't know. Snap call, so let's call.
Call from Whisco, call from Ginger, call from King of Deuce, flat, because positions, call from Hoka, call from JBG, call from Nudarino, call from Nudist. Call from Cat, we're calling.
We're calling, let's do it. What's up, Cloker?
This hand though, I like a little bit more as a call, and we'll get to why that is. And uh if you sent fold because, oh, I don't wanna play out of position, like, o- okay, that's fine, but if you wanna make the most money. At some point, you're gonna have to be able to go after these big ranges. The board comes queen of diamonds to a diamonds five of spades, do you want to check here? Do you wanna bet two twenty into six forty? Do you wanna bet four forty into uh six forty? Or do you wanna bet six ninety into six forty?
Fuck, like this hand's gonna get crazy. Cat got a zero on the flop. Oh wait, I gotta, I gotta turn the volume on, I have a lasting, uh okay, cool. I know just by looking at this setup, like this shit's gonna get cra- what's gonna go on?
Yeah, it's uh, why, yeah, ooh, I can hear my echo. Alright, yeah, it's better. Yeah, um yeah, this is uh wide ranges, uh we have pretty much no equity. We check raise, dunk leading, I'm on a such a dry board. Ah yeah, yeah, he's saying check raise, Dr. HJ is.
Cap is taking these quizzes with us, cause he's a PC dot com member, and he said he just got a zero on the flop. Nuda says Assassin of Hado, turn on brain melt, level one.
Yikes, boys, what are we doing here?
Check fold says king of deuces, in game, that's what I would do.
What, check fold?
Yeah.
I mean, we just have no hand, no draw.
This is great dunk board, why, Whisco?
I get to check.
Four forty.
I got to check. Alright, yeah, we're, let's do it. Um I I don't, I don't know what to do here other than check. I honestly, I'm trying to make it. I'm trying to make a case to do something else in my head, but anytime we bet, we end up getting called and check folding. It is really nice to have him have some auto gives up in folds, but I think he's just gonna call with an ace of diamonds, he can call with, just call with like ace three, ace four. Um he does fold out like king, jack, he has queen, actually blocked queen, jack, I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and I would say this is not the donk leading board, like the donk leading board would have been two, five, four, two, five, six.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I think he just throws out these other options, it's kind of like, you know, we're just gonna be checking. Yeah, he just needs options, no backdoor, but people don't check raise enough, I agree, so let's just check. Is this a trick?
So like, I would fold in game, but I feel like he's gonna fucking raise it to seven seventy five. I would fold in game.
I mean, I think we just do, uh is this a trick, like? Cause he he's had these quizzes where it's just a trick, right, and like, alright, well, guys, I wanted to quiz you on every easy spot, but it's a snap fold, you have no hand, no draw, and you do anything else, it's a mistake, like. This has to be that spot, right?
Yeah, Alex turns on brain melt level two, is it in my chat?
My chip count too low to call it, but obviously he's gonna check raise, that's a, maybe not, I'm folding. I'm just hitting fold and see what happens.
I really would, but I gotta feel like it's gonna be seven seventy five, let's see what happens.
Alright.
I think that you should make it ten, twelve here. And let me walk through all the options here, this is not, this is a situation people. I don't get how everybody thinks they're going to call every hand out of the big line and just play if they hit the flop and that's somehow good poker. If you can think of the first time you played at a home game when you were total fish, what did you do? Out of position, you'd look at any hand and you would call and you would see if you hit the board, and if you didn't, you would fold. There was one guy who was raising a lot and he just picked your pocket. And I don't know how people think they're going to regress to that, well, actually, I'm pretty grateful for this because it's the only reason I have a job. I don't know how people think that's going to work, okay? Look at all the options you have here. So if you bet two twenty, not really a great one, but let's say you bet two thirds call, okay? There is logic behind that, so I'm just gonna open a standard raise first end range. So here's the crazy thing, so this is a fifteen percent raise first end range. This guy opened the button, that means he has all these hands, he has all these hands, and that's not all. He has these hands and these hands and these, probably these, definitely these and these and these. And definitely this, so, but I would be shocked if it was less hands than this, right? So look at what happens on a lot of these boards, is this guy just has an air ball. This is one of the first things you learn when you play poker professionally, is nobody has anything here, you gotta find a way to make them fold. And then as you move up in stakes, everybody knows that, so you gotta start balancing, right? But if you guys are playing, you know, live, uh I want you to think of something, so let's say this guy defends with any pair, any draw. And any gut shot, any pair, any draw, okay? He has nothing because this range is so big, he has nothing fifty percent of the time. So if you bet two thirds of the pot and that needs to work forty percent of the time, and you think he's gonna fold high cards, you're good to go, right? Now let's say you bet over the size of the pot, or exactly the size of the pot, let's take that, that needs to work fifty percent of the time. He needs to defend fifty percent of the hands, he is only defending about forty nine point three percent of the hands. The other thing is, is if you overbet a little bit here, he is not calling with his gunshots. Okay, now he's down to forty two, he's probably not calling with his pocket threes, right? That cuts it out even more, but okay, before I start doctoring this up, I wanna show you why this is my favorite play. My favorite play here is with uh jack seven of hearts is a check raise. Uh or let me tell you why I flatted that hand pre-flop, right? I flatted this hand pre-flop because this hand flops a lot of hands that we can donk that with. It gives us, this is a safer hand to check raise uh lower boards. So let's say the board comes uh eight. Let's say the board comes, I'm trying to not give myself a seven, six, three, three, right? We check, he bets, and we check raise, we're going to check raise here, by the way, right? If he calls in the turns of jack, he doesn't have many jacks in his range. Having a jack, having any broadways when you're check raising is nice, having a suited anything is really good if you're setting up donkly as check raises. If I were just three bet airballing there, I'd want a bigger piece of crap hand, right? So let's say nine, five of diamonds, obviously would have flopped really well here, but let's say I just see this guy's opening damn near anything. Uh he's a reg, he's good, but if he sees that weird little three bet from me, the first time, he's probably gonna fold the high card on most flops, which means most flops I'm gonna take it. I might, because I don't love flating nine, five suited as much, I might three bet there, right? Most of the time I would just fold, right, but like, for example, right, or I would, yeah, you can call, I just don't love it. But anyway, that means that, let's say he bets here, here, here's the crazy thing, so he bets here. By the way, what hand does he have, what range does he have now? If you can set up the check raise and you think the guy's c bet in everything, you should always set up the check raise. The three bet is fun to throw in there on occasion, uh I really kinda like it with the crappy aces. Uh because if you just flat a crap ace, it's pretty much everything is in his port. Whereas if you three bet with it and you hit, most guys are not gonna double barrel bluff on an ace high board as a bluff in a three bet pot. And if you miss, the hand is pretty crappy if you, it's, aces are really bad to check raise with because you're blocking all the ace highs you want that folding, so they're fun to think of.
There's three minutes left.
Now you might say, that's not true, I see some people check back, what do they check back? They don't check back jack nine of hearts when you complete it from the big line, you check, if they do check anything, what do they check? They're checking pairs, right? So w- w- the, this is, here, here's how this is gonna work. On this flop, he is going to have an over pair or he's going to have an over pair or better four percent of the time. He is going to have top pair, or he's going to have a pair about a third of the time, and then the rest of the time, he has a mixture of draws and nothing, right? If you remove a lot of those pairs, cause he's pot controlling, what does he have? He's got two kind of better or a whole lot of nothing, it's gonna be mostly nothing, right? But you just, I, guys, I have been paying my bills, taking care of my mom with this move I'm showing you right here. And you know, always go big, right? You can always go big because look at this, so let's say he c bets everything. I'm, I'm gonna make this guy super mad, so I'm making it one thousand, one twelve uh to win nineteen twenty seven. I just wanted to reach for the four figure bet, so his bet needs to work fifty two point five percent of the time, he needs to defend forty seven point five percent of the time, okay? So let's say he c bets everything and defends everything, this guy c bets everything, he fast plays pocket nine. He knows my game, the jig is up, Alex Fitzgerald. And when I check raise, he's like, not on my watch, I'm calling with my pocket threes, I know you, sir. Still folding fifty eight percent of the time, I need you fifty two point five, right? And what usually happens is they check the pocket bear below the top pair and uh oh, now you have a whole lot less hands, right? They check, and guys, the last time I checked, I was making five big blinds every time I check raised the big line. Now, I I target really effectively, I really like twenty five to thirty five big line stacks because then if the guy wants to call BS on me, he has to three bet all of his chips and just nobody's capable of that. I'm also very careful at, you know, at finding astronomical opening ranges and really high c bet percentages, like eighty percent or plus. But pretty much everybody can have this add, and it did work.
Good.
We made it, guys, that was an eight minute next question. Four sixes was in a hurry, and then he mixed the one with the.
With the eight minute explanation, I'm in a hurry, I'm getting yelled at upstairs.
Like the standard.
That was pain, I mean, that was good, it was a long-winded explanation to say, and you know what's funny, that range was super tight. Like thirty three percent on a button, dude, he's at least ten, at the minimum ten points tighter than that.
I mean, I do agree, you get a lot of rolls, but you are like playing with some fucking fire, I mean, can we agree on that?
Excuse me?
I mean, I do agree that you get a decent amount of folds here, but this is kinda like playing with fire a little bit, no?
Yeah, I mean, I would have preferred to eat, like the jack of diamond, like the king of diamonds. King three, you know, with the king of diamonds or, you know, uh within the one over, you know, or something like that a lot. I just don't, I think this is good, but I wouldn't wanna overdo it here, but he made a very good, and even showed how profitable it is versus a thirty three percent opening range, just imagine if the guy's opening fifty percent of buttons, forty five percent of buttons and whatnot. It just goes to show you that we need to be check raising wider, and I know when we look at our database reviews, we're, you know, I think you wanna be around fifty pers- fifteen percent check raises, and to achieve that, you're gonna need to take some of these spots. I wouldn't say do it every time, but to achieve a fifteen percent check raise, which we wanna have in a lot of spots. You know, you're gonna have to do this occasionally, I would just say be careful.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Why, that's why donk bet out of position post five, except this is not the right board to do that, and what are we repping when we do that?
But um guys, in my chat, I'm just gonna, I have to do my intro here pretty quick, I'm gonna do a giveaway. I'm gonna owe to my, I'm just getting wrecked, but I wanna hook you guys up for making this awesome and, you know, um engaging, so, you know, enter explanation point poker coaching in my chat.
Wait, before you do that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw you the host, so my guys get in your chat too.
Alright, yeah, and um.
And you could throw the host to somebody else.
Yes, yeah, so get in my chat, guys, explanation point poker coaching. I'll give gods big toes, guys to get in here, toes, guys to get in here, team toe, and I'll run it, and if you win, just whisper me. Um I have black chip, I don't have ACR, and if you, we can get PayPal, and I'll probably try to get that sent out today, so hit me up. Poker coaching, get in there, I wanna make sure you guys are making it happen. Um toe was fun, man.
Yeah, man, let me just wrap this up a quick and I'll throw you the host. Thanks for hanging out, guys, thanks for all the follows, bunch of follows, bunch of uh interaction today, if you missed this.
It was fun, man.
YouTube uh replay will be out within the next hour or two. Explanation point PC in my chat as well, if you'd like to sign up for the free version of pokercoaching dot com, where you get twenty five quizzes and a bunch of homework. Where you get twenty five quizzes and a bunch of homeworks and stuff, and it changes, uh, premium version gives you over six hundred. Uh, quizzes, quizzes from me, quizzes from my man Crazy Sixes, Alex Fitzgerald, Matt Affleck, Evan Jarvis, Jonathan Little, all that available for you. Thanks for the love, guys, and uh, thanks for hanging out, buddy, and, oh, be back on stream tomorrow too, playing Big Sunday, both myself and Sixes, cuz we're both. Sickos.
Let's do it. Yeah, toe was fun once again, buddy, um, look forward to it next week. Um, I'm sure I'll talk to you before, you know, the session tomorrow, but uh, you know, enjoy your day, man.
Yeah, you too, man, I'm gonna throw you a host right now.
I appreciate that, buddy, take care.